Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Dave Abdullah.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Winsell.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please be seated. Next, we have Agenda Approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve the amended Order of Business for October 22nd, 2019, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Abdullah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is...oh, wait a minute. That was Agenda Approval. For Mr. Miyake, I needed to remove 9E, so can we reintroduce that? Because...
Since she made the motion, Lisa.
Oh, you want item 9E removed?
Yes. I just realized, yeah. I have it right here.
Okay, so I can...well, we voted, so you...we can go back and amend that motion?
We can amend it, yes.
All right, so we're going to amend the motion to reflect the removal of 9E.
That's per Corporate Counsel Miyake and Emergency Manager Gavin.
Support.
Support again by Councilwoman Abdullah. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Approval of the Minutes. This is the minutes from the regular meeting of October 8th, 2019.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah.
I move that we approve the minutes from October 8th, 2019, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as outlined in Item 4A.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Public Hearing and Comment on Agenda Item. This is Agenda Items Only. Step up to the microphone, state your name, and you have two minutes. We do have one that asked for a little bit more than I did grant.
My name is Pamela Traskus. I live on Robindale. I would like to ask about Item 9B, a proposed millage that's going to be a surprise to us in December. When I looked at some paperwork, I saw that it was actually started last April. I'm not understanding how this could come to our attention for December to raise our If this was supposed to be started in April and put on the budget in some way, shape, or form, or slid into the Water Department, it seems to me this is a dereliction of duties if this wasn't handled properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other... Hi.
I'll look here...oh, go ahead. Kim Constant, I'm the Assistant Parks and Recreation Director for Dearborn Heights. I just have a question in regards to 9E, the expansion of the studio.
We removed it.
That was removed.
That's removed.
That's what we just removed, 9E. Okay.
Hello, my name is Lynda Vance. I'm the Controller. I don't live in Dearborn Heights. I want to clarify some stuff before the council decides to approve or unapprove any claims.
This is just for Agenda Items.
It is Agenda because it's a claim.
No, it's a claim. It's a claim. It's not Agenda. That's a different part.
We all said it was a current claim.
Okay, so I guess I'll answer it if you have questions when it comes up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public hearing and comment on Agenda Items Only? It must be on the agenda.
Should I wait for the 5G thing to later?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Well, no, it's on the agenda. You can comment on it now, because unless you want to wait for public comment at the end, after it would already be addressed.
Well, I can do it now. I'm going to read through this as quickly as I can, but I did a 40-minute presentation about three months ago called "5G: An Existential Threat to Our Health, Privacy, and Freedom." So, to understand what I'm about to say, and I'm going to say it very fast, you might also want to reference that. I promise there will be a little teaser at the end of this presentation. I'm here tonight representing the Stop 5G global activists from around the planet. I'm also here to report on what transpired in the three months since the city council allowed a special session on 5G where I gave a 40-minute lecture titled "5G: An Existential Threat to Our Health, Privacy, and Freedom." That was July 23rd. That was almost exactly three months ago. In the simplest of terms, 5G is the next generation of Internet which is being rolled out throughout the planet, both on the ground and in space through 5G satellites. The problem for human health is that this radiation, unlike 4G, will be inescapable, more deleterious to human health, and thousands of peer-reviewed studies show that it will cause increases in cancer and other diseases, especially for young children with thinner skulls. First, the good news. My lecture, "5G: An Existential Threat to Our Health, Privacy, and Freedom," has now been viewed over 3,000 times worldwide and has led to interviews with activists from Australia to Israel. During those three months, protests against 5G are increasing worldwide. Perhaps the largest demonstration occurred in Switzerland on September 21st, 2019, six months after 5G went live, and the citizens almost immediately experienced symptoms such as loud ringing in the ear, intense headaches, unbearable earaches, insomnia, chest pain, fatigue, and not feeling well in their homes. The demonstrations were attended by thousands of Swiss citizens. By summer 2020, I expect many more global events to occur. Now for the bad news. On 9/27/2019, I was driving on Marquette Street, just west of Inster Road in Garden City, and was informed by the head of a utility crew that the four boxes they had just placed on a telephone pole were, in fact, 5G antennas that they have been installing. 5G antennas for the last nine months throughout Metro Detroit. I would like to know where these antennas will be placed in Dearborn Heights, and actually, the city council has been very good about this issue. In any case, because all local governments worldwide have been emasculated from stopping the deployment, you can soon expect to suffer the same symptoms of our Swiss brethren. Cancer and other diseases may take months or years to develop. I worked five years in radiation physics medical research. The second piece of the bad news is that Elon Musk is now looking at placing 43,000 5G antennas into space, and the total number could be over 100,000 when the space deployment is complete. Elon Musk is one of many corporations set to deploy 5G satellites. The third piece of the bad news is that corporate media, presidential candidates, et cetera, refuse to even discuss the negative health impacts of 5G, most probably because they are financed by the corporations rolling out 5G. Worse yet, there is a very organized move to censor the 5G movement on big tech platforms, which is an egregious violation of our right to free speech. They continue to ignore the established science and have labeled Stop 5G activists as conspiracy theorists, despite the sound, peer-reviewed science. I was deplatformed from the local version of Facebook next door just a week after delivering my lecture on 5G. On 9/27, I experienced a censorship again when Facebook suspended my account for 30 days and deplatformed me from the largest Stop 5G group, 24,000 members, which I had moderated for over a year. Now I cannot even view that Facebook group. This purge occurred just three days after I stopped by Congressman Debbie Dingell's office to remind her I wanted my concerns about 5G to be addressed. Debbie is an advocate for 5G and is on the Congressional 5G Caucus. Whether she had something to do with this, my censorship, is purely speculation, but I cannot ignore the coincidence between these events. In the new age of no choice, we have already seen a 50% reduction in sperm count, an exponential rise in both autism and suicide, and a significant increase in various forms of cancer.
Okay, thank you, sir. The five minutes is up that I granted you.
Can I just...
You had five minutes. I'm sorry. Continue at the end. You can continue at the end on number 14. You have public comment again, but I have to stop you at this time.
Okay, that's fine. I will save the last three paragraphs for later.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
No problem. Your name, and you have two minutes.
Marian Johnston. I'll keep it short and sweet. I kind of lost my train of thought. But basically, I'm very surprised, shocked, and disappointed about the possible upcoming millage and the fact that the documents that were brought up that I also read have been suddenly brought to light. And our mayor did concur with Mr. Falco that this document, the initial one, was brought up in April and should have been put into our budget and was not. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Any other...come to the microphone.
I have a couple items, and I'm trying not to take the full five minutes which I asked for. The veto which our mayor put, basically, and he stated in it that you never asked for the information. That's why he's surprised that we want to subpoena the information. Probably my friend Ray Muscat remember, because he's been here for a long time coming to the city council. When Janet Bede, Councilwoman Janet Bede, used to ask for the cash registry, she was treated so badly by some of the city council members, and the mayor recruited somebody in my house to defeat her in the next election. Luckily, the guy never ran. So, for the people who are running now, I hope they understand what I'm saying. Now, the second item, the water sewage. Like she said, the letter was sent by Evans, the executive of Wayne County, on April 12th. Why it wasn't put into the budget? That is a good question. You could have approved it at that time. But we waited until after August 31st, which is the deadline, and now we are asking the people to pay 0.8 some millage, $1,024,000. I would like to ask our Controller how much money we have surplus and ask the mayor. He always brag about surplus in the budget. I would like him to tell the public, the city, the resident, the taxpayers, how much money he claims he has, you know, surplus. If he has surplus, why he's going to our pockets? It's nothing but to tax us without our representation so he can have extra money in that water fund which he is using left, right, and center for anything and everything. I hope you do not approve it. There is CSO money, 3.8 million dollars, which he overcharged the residents, and it's sitting there, and I think it might qualify if we get an opinion from the right lawyers. So, I hope before you approve it, you check everything to relieve our resident from being overtaxed left, right, and center on the Act 345 on the health insurance, which he used to add money to it without our knowledge, and he saved that money and keep it in the budget so he can brag that he has surplus. I sat with Mr. Dave Abdullah and plant moraine auditors. They said our city is barely above water. Am I correct, Mr. Dave? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public hearing or comment on Agenda Items?
Well, he stole part of my fire, Dana Parrish. I won't hit anymore on that. He pretty much covered everything I wanted to. I'm going to hit Item 8B. It kind of goes back to many things. I've heard some...one person running for office saying there needs to be more cooperation between the council and the administration. I'd like to point everyone back to an old document that's been hanging around all for a couple hundred years. It's called the Constitution. And they actually warned us against government cooperating with each other. There's actually Articles 1, 2, and 3 in the Constitution that were set in place for proper checks and balances between the different departments, as they were called, when the Federalist Papers came out. In fact, Federalist Paper Number 51 addressed them specifically. And that was one of the things that the founders were really concerned about, was the different branches of government cooperating with one another to take over the rights of the people. We don't want cooperation in our branches of government. We want them to scrutinize each other. We want checks and balances in our government. When our government are pals and they cooperate and rubber stamp everything, we, the people, end up carrying the backs of everything. We're paying the bills. We pay taxes. What do we pay taxes for? The government? No. To take care of our fellow man and take care of ourselves. That's what taxes are paid for. Not to pay at anybody else's payroll, not for a building, for the general welfare of each other. Article 1, Article 2, and Article 3. Article 1 is all legislative powers herein granted shall be vested in Congress or the legislature. Article 2, the executive power shall be vested in the president, the mayor. Article 3, the judicial powers of the United States shall be vested in the Supreme Court. The court. It's very cut and dry. Our city is no different than the United States government, and they're all checked and they're all balanced for one reason. So, we don't have anarchy, so we don't have an upward monarchy like we end up with, and we don't end up with a revolution. Look what's going on in Washington.
Thank you. Any other...for...any other comment on Agenda Items? Okay, let's move on. Next, we have...oh, no.
Hers is on the agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Your name, and you have two minutes, please.
Tabitha Kerr. Hello. My name is Tabitha Kerr, and I want to say thank you for the resolution for Liliana's Law. I'm just eternally grateful that I'm not fighting this alone, that this is our fight, and I appreciate that. I brought books for every single member for the city council, the mayor, and the lawyer, and I would like you to follow along, please. When I initially made this book, I printed out the inspection records, and when I noticed is that the inspection records for the St. Albert School, seven years of inspections, were missing. Luckily, I had them, and they will be all labeled with an orange sticker on the left-hand At first, the school at St. Albert failed their inspections, and within a couple months later, they were compliant. August 16th, 2010, the school had a rule violation, and they sent their report on when they fixed this, and then all of the items were all completed in August 18th, 2010. One of them was a serious injury procedure not posted in the gym. They were also supposed to remove all tables and wires and to secure them properly. Me being here proves that that did not happen. As we all know, my daughter Liliana lost her life on 2017, January 20th, when a recalled cafeteria table that was clearly supposed to be removed in 2010 fell on her, which ended her life. She was only three years old. Also, I noticed on there that there was a combustible substance in their boiler room. The next were for the original application requirement checklist set a fire safety requirement for the inspection. It says NA with a little bit of scribble, and it also says yes. Which one is it? I can't tell you because it has both. As we move further, the program director did not have her CPR certification for the school. That is a clear rule violation. However, the only thing that they have sent to prove that she was going to fix the problem was a note that she would call an approved vendor and make an appointment to get approved CPR cards. There was no picture, there was no proof. This is all that was required for the Department of Health and Human Services. There was also an environmental health inspection request from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. The school paid $356 for the inspection, and the inspection has eight sections, and one of them is Section 5, which is site fencing, building, and other structures and general premises maintained in clean and safe condition. Clearly, it wasn't. Also, I want to make a note that the inspection only lasted for 30 minutes. How can any building be substantially compliant within 30 minutes? It's impossible unless it's a shed. The next is the Fire Marshal Inspection. Their last inspection stated it was on March 25th, 2010. When they filed for another one, it was March 8th, 2013. It was three years that a fire marshal was not in that building. I am under the impression, by law, a fire marshal should be in there once every two years. This is against the law. Again, there's a no change in building construction declaration. It is incomplete. There is no date of inspection date for the last inspection. Also, the original fire inspector name was crossed out, and then there was another name Next, another environmental health inspection request from the Michigan Department of Health and Services. Again, it was $356. Although it was better amount of time, 90 minutes. I was just at Lansing, and I had my testimony. A hamburger has better safety requirements than our children attending school. For methods of inspection from dates on April 22nd, 2015. Also, there was a date of environmental health inspection from February 12th, 2015, February 19th, 2015, from the fire safety inspection. The school did not have their licensing book. There was no licensing book on the premises that included all licensing inspection-related corrective action plans since 2010. It's very convenient considering that the tables were supposed to be removed in 2010. This is stated more than once in multiple different years in their inspection records. The only violation established in the school was when my little girl died. That's the only violation that the school has ever been conducted in. This is the only violation that Department of Health and Human Services and any other inspector was able to ever establish, regardless of what was in these inspections. I also want to note that in the inspection report, that none of the staff, the teachers, realized that there were tables in that building. However, I don't understand that. On the second paragraph, it said there were also in-wall tables present on the adjacent wall that did not have any padding on them. If you did not know there was any tables on there, that does not make any sense, because there is clearly no padding on other tables that were inside the wall. I also want to note that the locking mechanism was not provided the day of the inspection. The key should always be in the building. The sergeant who was conducting the report said it did appear that the hardware in the tables were faulty. On February 10th, they had another special investigation where the school unrolled the tables how they were supposed to and laid them how they were properly supposed to be set. Once it was unlocked, it immediately, without any warning, fell onto the ground. Not only could the staff member, the janitorial service in the building, that could have been hurt, but so could have the Department of Health and Human Services. It fell. There was more than one faulty table in that school. That is when there was an actual violation established. Again, there was no licensing book on the premises. The licensing book on the premises did not have all of the reports from 2010. Again, convenient. The following reports were also missing, 2013 correction plan and the 2011 renewal report. 14 out of 14 staff members did not have their professional development completed or verification that their professional development was completed. I also want to mention that almost every inspection that was conducted, every single one had child records or incomplete. To add insult to injury, in this report was made on May 8th, 2017, March 22nd and 23rd of 2017, for the maintenance of the premises. There were loose paint chips chipping on three different rooms in the building accessible to children. Also, there's a hanging wire in the ceiling, which is strictly prohibited. Yet, even with all of that, there is still no rule violation, and that was established on February 9th, 2018. I have the schematics of the table provided with the blueprints from June 4th, 1940. We're in 2019. We need to catch it up a bit, right? There's also the actual table provided that hit my daughter. It was table number five, and that will always be etched in my head. There will be a graph on the following page. And I want to also mention that Michigan is number one in child death and injury. Liliana's Law would be more than table safety. It's for yearly school inspections. Which brings me to the first child death in Michigan. Angel Nicole Lee Pocock Smith, born 2001, died 2007. She was a kindergartner in Ferndale Elementary when a rusty flagpole snapped after a strong wind blew, which ended her life. She was supposed to graduate last year. Instead, her parents just received her diploma. Not even a year later, Janavi Thompson, he lost his life on his third birthday. In the article, it says Janavi's death is not common. It's the first to happen at a center in Genesee County in nearly two years. That means there's another child out there that has been injured or possibly killed that is not in public record. In 1989, the commission issued a warning about cafeteria tables and identified six table manufacturers at the time. They also provided stickers, issuing warnings that these children should not even be near these tables, playing by these tables. As adults, as teachers, that should have been done. Children don't know better. As adults, we do. Unfortunately, in Michigan, my daughter is not the only...after my daughter died, that more children have been injured. Jessica was a third-grade elementary school in Plymouth Canton Schools Field Elementary when a janitor had her put up a 350-pound piece of machinery into the wall. It is one thing to wipe down the tables for responsibility. It is another for a third-grade girl to take a janitorial's responsibility and do it herself. The table was not locked behind her, which went immediately fell because there was nobody supervi- nobody supervising while this little girl was putting the table into the wall. This little girl is one of the lucky ones. As you see on my graph, the survival rate for children is very marginal. Again, in April 2019, I received a voicemail from a mother from Ypsilanti Township from Brick Elementary. A poorly secured table fell on three students, injuring all of them. One of them had to go to the hospital. I want to make it perfectly clear, like when I was in Lansing, not a single child in this book, which is there are 18 of them across the East Coast from 1987, lost their lives due to a freak accident. My child, our children, were killed and injured due to lack of policy, protocol, and adequate inspections. And it's time that we need to do that. Right now, the law faces opposition from the Department of Health and Human Services, the Department of Education, and the Michigan Association of Superintendents, primarily because of budget concerns. And our children are worth more than their bottom line. And shame on them. No one should have to bury their child. Please go to lilianaslaw.com and sign for the petition. I also have petitions here readily available to be signed, and I also have petitions with stamped and return labels, so you can pass them out. They're easy to sign and put them in the mail. I micromanage everything for everyone. They're really easy, and I just need everyone's help. This is not just my fight. As I said, this is our fight. Thank you.
Counselor.
I know we have a rule, but I want to say something here to this young lady here. I understand that, but I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna say it now. This is my right, and I'm gonna say it now, excuse me. I don't know how you go through life anymore. I don't know. But I'm with you 100%. And I'm gonna tell you, anyone who doesn't, any person that wants to put value, monetary value, on a person's life, like budget constraints. I'd like to say what I want to say, but it's illegal for me to say it.
It's disgusting. Thank you.
Okay. At this point, we're gonna move.
Can we just a moment of silence, quick moment of silence?
Yeah, we can take 10 seconds of silence. Thank you for taking the time to present that to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we need to move on. We're running way behind tonight. We have fund transfers and current claims.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve current fund claim transfer 6-1 through 644 is submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Counselor.
Councilwoman Muscat.
There's quite a few items here, and we discussed this at our last council meeting about amount budget before payment, this and that. To me, it's just a semantic words, wording is semantics here. I ask for money of what is left in the accounts. I've got a series of emails from Controller, which I don't understand at all.
Controller, could you come up to the main microphone at the podium here, please? Thank you.
I'm told there's no budget for the water department. Then I'm told that there's no money left, only what was spent. How do we continue to pay for something if there's no money left? And then, again, I get another one that tells me there is money, and all I'm asking for is when we get an expenditure of $42,673.50 from a, from whatever account, that there be a number what's left in that account. That's all I'm asking for. And I thought that was pretty clear, and you're not providing it.
And I think I was very clear in my reply. Currently, there is no water budget. The city council adopts a water budget typically at the end of November, beginning of December. That has been a practice for many, many years. This is how it's been done. So, that is where it's at now. So, we cannot put money at a dollar amount for that budget line, because there isn't a budget currently.
I'm not asking for a budget.
Well, that's all there is to have numbers.
Excuse me. But you tell me there's money in the accounts. Is there money or not?
Money in the accounts would be money in the budget. Since there is no money, there's no money.
Then how do we pay in the bill if there's no money?
Then I showed you that there is money in the bank account for the water fund.
Correct.
So, the water fund has money. There is no budget right now. They're currently presenting it. And at that point, then you will have budgeted amounts, and those amounts will be reflected.
So, how much money is left after this, for whatever I said, $42,673.50? That's all I'm asking. It's just no different than you writing a check out of your personal checking account. You open your checkbook, you're not gonna write a $47,000 check if there's no, you say there's no money.
But I did give you the statement that shows there's $11 million in the water fund.
I'm not doing the math. That's not my job to do the math.
I understand that, but...
So, this is all I'm asking for, Controller?
Sir, there isn't a budget to have numbers put in there. Councilmember, this has happened, and for clarification, we didn't have a budget last year for the fiscal year until you adopted it in April, and this was the same scenario from July to April 17th of last year, and it wasn't an issue. This is a current process that we normally do, that is usually adopted by December. If you want to change that, then I guess you have to make the appropriate requests and have that changed. I can't give you a number in an account, a budgeted account, if there's no budget there. There is no money.
I guess what I'm hearing is he's not asking for what's budgeted. He wants to know the account balance.
What account? For clarification, what account? There is no balance, like if you look at the...
Which one of these accounts? You're putting...
Yeah, that account has a zero balance, because that number would be a budget number.
Well, no, he's asking you to put...
I understand.
Well, then actually, if that's the way it is, maybe we shouldn't be taking on these accounts until we have a budget in place for them.
Let's calm down, and let me point out, one of the items that we would love to finalize the budget. If you recall, the council, the recommendation of the consultant last year was a 5% increase in rates. Instead, a motion was passed to decrease it by 10%. We are now finding out that with the lead issue and many others, and I certainly hope you don't turn down item 9B, but the fact of the matter is that we need to know, and I'm afraid that by not increasing, by not raising the rates 5%, and by delaying it, we're gonna see after the election, interesting enough, a 10% or 15% increase in the rates. You've got to deal with the revenue side, and then we can supply you with the expenses.
Counselor.
Councilwoman Muscat finished, and then we got Councilwoman Abella.
And that's fine. But we voted to decrease those rates, and it never happened. So, as far as I'm concerned, we did pass a budget.
No, we didn't.
Well, how the heck do you, you're contradicting yourself.
Okay, at this point, we're not being productive.
I'm not gonna get myself worked up here.
Okay, we're not being productive. Let's go to Councilman Abella at this point.
Okay, Controller, is there any way in order to be able to resolve this, that we could change the wording? Because now we're going on the semantics, okay?
That's it.
So, how about if we say the amount in the water fund before payment? This way, it's not a budgeted item. The concern the councilman's got...
Councilman, please address us, Councilman.
I will counsel.
Yeah. So, the concern the councilman's got is, he just wants to know like a rough figure, not rough, exact figure, actually, I'm sorry, that we are getting this money from. So, and I understand your end, you're saying there is no budget, no specific budget. Fine. But if we were to change the semantics, provided legally, we could do this, and change it from amount budget before payment on the water items, and change it to amount in the water fund before payment. I realize there's gonna be many other things taken out of it.
Yeah, yeah.
I realize that.
And typically, so that's why I gave Councilman Muscat...
And I read those emails.
...the trial balance with the amount of money in the bank account, because that's the only other way I can tell him that we have enough money. If we've got $11 million in collectively between investments and cash accounts in the water fund alone, then the $43,000 invoice that he's referring to, there's more than enough money to cover it.
But he's not questioning whether we have enough to pay it. I mean, he's saying that could be in that situation. He's just saying he'd like to see the amount. If you're saying there's no budget, I respect that.
There is none, so that's why there's no amount there.
I respect that. But could you put in there the amount in the water fund before payment? You just mentioned right now $11 million something.
So, that would be the cash account, yeah. So, I could take, I guess, for each item, I could have, and the person that prepares these doesn't have access to the cash accounts, but we could give you a summation until that point. Yeah, I mean, he doesn't have access.
But that's all I asked for.
And I gave it to you.
Wait a minute, but I'm not gonna do the math. You need to put it on the paper, because you know what's gonna happen? And I've heard it 100 times. Council approved it, council approved it, council, and it comes right back to us again. When something happens, it's you approved it. So, I want no more good, I said it before, no more good faith. You tell me what's there, I'll approve it. You don't tell me, I don't say yes. And that's as simply, and that's my right as a legislator of this city.
And that is fine, and like I said, I gave you to the quickest ability that I had to ensure you that there was money in the account to cover these expenditures until there's a budget.
And I agree, but I want it on paper, so I have proof that somewhere down the road, it doesn't come back on Ray Muscat, that I said yes to something later on down the road. That's all I'm saying.
And that is fine. I mean, like I said, I feel like I gave you the information that you needed to make in a decision, so...
I thank you, I thank you for your work, but again, I'm not gonna sit there and go through every one of these pieces of paper, look up, and do the math.
Councilman, we have Councilman Bazey now, next.
I don't think you necessarily have to do the math if you know there's $11 million there.
Well, actually, we're asking for the math to be done, because that's your department.
And that's fine, and I'll have my clerical person do it, but I'm just saying, you know there's money there, and I gave you the proof.
That's not difficult.
Okay, okay, Councilman, we have Councilman Bazey next. Please go ahead, sir.
While you're up there, Controller, so I did mention that at the last meeting, 6-8, I don't know if I can address you, the mayor usually gets upset if I address anybody else other than him, but, so for Plant Moran, I don't know who can answer that. We have, as of right now, close to $200,000 that we paid from January till today. So, how much more are we paying before the end of the year? Because right now, we have an invoice of $46,000. We paid another invoice, similar amount, the last meeting and the one before, similar. So, we're close to $200,000 right now. So, what is, how much is the audit costing the city for the annual audit?
I don't have the exact number of how much it's gonna cost. Per your suggestion that all that money was for audit, enclosed, there's a spreadsheet that I prepared.
The total audit's about $76,000.
To show you the breakdown between certain items, not all items in that GL account number are actually for the audit. Audit expenses usually start in May, they end when they prepare the final statements and present it to the council, which should be, I believe, in the first meeting possibly of November. So, that final, I think this bill here is like 99% done. There's only gonna be a little bit more for preparing the financial statements.
Yeah, it says balanced due on it also on the back page, or balanced due.
That's probably because the invoice brought the payment, so it dropped in the file. So, right now, this is what, I think I just, I gave you all the copies, but there was, I showed how much is for the audit preparation. I suspect that there might not, there'll only be one more invoice that will come through in the audit. They're finalizing the financial statements as we speak. I'm assuming the first meeting in November, it'll be presented to the city council, and then the audit expenses will be over. There are other expenses, as you know, that Plant Moran provides other services to us, and that's some of the numbers that are included in that number. So, I don't have an exact number. I'm assuming there's probably only one more invoice for them for the audit, and you'll be presented with the audit in the next couple weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a couple other items, I won't go to a lot of them.
Is it with me?
No, actually.
Okay.
Oh, wait, you have a question for her?
No, not for her, I have to...
Okay.
There's a couple invoices here, 635.
Wait a minute, Councilman Bazey, Councilman Wenzel has a question.
Just a quick question.
Since you're up there.
The sheet you just gave, a spreadsheet, it's $118,000 for benefits. What are the, what's the benefits?
That's the Plant Moran Group that handles our benefit facilitation. You approved that contract, I don't know in May.
That's through HR.
Yep.
Yeah, that's HR.
So, for item 635, Bridge Inspection Program, I remember just a few months ago, we paid another invoice for Bridge Inspection Program. It would help us if we put down which bridge are we talking about on this particular one? The second one, 636, we have another invoice of $46,643. It talks about street, says Lewis Manor Resurfacing Construction. I don't know, that's just a subdivision or different streets?
That's the whole subdivision.
That's the paving program that the council approved a while back, and this is for the construction engineering and contract management.
Thank you.
My last comment is, again, you know, I pose a lot of these here when we don't send it out for, we keep talking about budget issues, but yet, you know, we don't send a lot of these out for bids, and that's one of the reasons I'm voting no on these.
Those were approved by the council.
No, I'm talking about the rest, a lot of other ones that we don't send out for bids or for RFPs.
I think we have contracts for some of those.
Not some, not most of them. I don't want to call them out, because I don't want somebody to be calling me like you have gotten calls from certain vendors, that somebody gives them our personal numbers to call.
Councilman Abella.
Madam Chair, I had questions for Director John Sellme. The first one is in regards to item number 611, and the normal amount that we pay for the stump removal, I'm sorry, grinding out the stump was $75, so that was fine. But this particular one on a property at 5944 Coolidge, cut down Chinese elm on the side closest to the driveway and grind out the stump, was $2,400. It seemed to be quite a bit higher than what we normally pay for a tree removal. Typically, it's in $1,500 to $1,800 range. Do you know why there's such an increase? Because I, off the top of my head, we had come to some sort of an agreement on what specifically is charged, and this one's quite a bit, seems to be, seems to be quite a bit more.
What claim is that? I've got 187 pages here, so...
I've got it here if you want.
Off the top of my head, my answer is, no, I don't know.
So, it's most specifically in regards to the amount they're charging, that is typically not in that range.
It depends on the circumference of the tree.
It might be the size of the tree, too, so, I mean, he could put more detail on there for an explanation, so...
I prefer that, because typically, it's much less than that on those trees. So, if you don't mind, at least, at the very minimum for next time, and I will go on good faith that you will look into this with them. The second question I had for you is on item 616. This one here, we're, and this one is kind of a subitem, okay? We're paying out here for meter repair and parts, and I know you yourself have mentioned that our meters are way behind. And I also recognize, of course, that we as a council are ones that make the final decision as far as putting in new meters. I'd like to make a suggestion that we start looking into that at this particular point to get some sort of a pricing, whether it's the administration that's gonna do that, whether it's your department's gonna be doing that, because I'm gonna tell you, in my four-plus years on council, I've never had so many calls about water bills going high, and including, I get water bills on rental properties that I own, and those, again, and I know what they've been, because I talked to them, you know, with my wife about them, and suddenly, they went from $200, $300, and suddenly, it's like in a $600 range. The water department's looking into it, but nevertheless, I've gotten more calls about issues with water bills than I've ever had. So, I think at this particular point, we owe it to residents to start looking into what the fee would be to change all these meters, to get hopefully a better reading.
Okay, thank you.
And I actually like to maybe backpedal a little bit, to go back to the conversation of having a water budget, because there's a lot of capital items that need to happen here in this next year, next three years that are mandated by the state. So, I'm not opposed to a water meter program. You know, it's, it's gonna be anywhere in the $7 to $9 million range. I've had some conversations with some, a couple vendors, so it's a lengthy process, but it's something that's certainly doable, but we gotta fund it. And one thing I will say, though, water meters never speed up, they always slow down. So, you put a newer meter in, it's gonna be much more...
But there is some issue right now with water bills.
I think there was a couple of things, right?
It's a regular problem.
Couple of things on the billing side, was that it was a 73-day bill instead of a 60-day bill. It was also, there's weather factors in... It was also, there's weather factors, and there's a lot of other factors, so everybody that's called, we've investigated the complaints and pretty much have vetted out most of that.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions?
But I'm in for the, to do the budgets so we can get some of these projects done.
Okay, any other questions?
Real quick, I missed one because of.
Okay, Councilman Muscat.
Six thirty-seven, Fire Station Headquarters Settlement Investigation. I just, a question, who was the original contractor that actually did the engineering on that building, and how was the ground tested?
Just going from memory, it's, I don't remember the name of the company, but the, the original core samples that they had did match up with the foundation that was, that was built. So that was the initial concern, that the walls were sinking, and since they've done more investigation, they found that it may be the floors inside are heaving as opposed to the outside walls sinking, and so, so it wasn't a matter of the wrong foundation for the type of soil it was built on, it's some kind of drainage issue. I don't know if they explain it to you any better, John, but that's.
Because I do know they had a lot of problems over there, building the new.
Yeah, the Canfield Center.
The Canfield Center there, with the ground not being stable, and so I'm thinking that whole area was, is probably like that, and it kinda, you know, my background a little bit is coming to my mind here of who did the actual engineering, was the testing properly done? That's my, that's what's going through my mind right now.
Yeah, so I can, I can dig in and get you that information for your.
I appreciate that.
So you can review it.
Thank you.
Any further questions? At this point, we are on fund transfers and current claims. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, let's do a poll. Councilman Muscat?
No.
Councilman Coniston?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey?
No.
Melonowski Maxwell, yes. Councilman Abdullah?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yes.
It passes. Next item on the agenda, consideration of bids. This is DT, DPW Director Sellme, award of bid for Parkland Park Concession Building Roof.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to concur with DPW Director John Sellme, an award the bid to Parkland Park Concession Building Roof is to be awarded to How Construction Services. The cost is eight thousand one hundred one dollars plus one dollar fifty cent per square foot for underlayment and replacement, and payment to be made upon satisfactory completion of the job. And also, part of the motion includes city refund all bid deposits to the unsuccessful bidders, as outlined in seven A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Just quickly for John Sellme, do you know what type of roof this is gonna be? Are we talking about shingle, metal?
Asphalt.
Asphalt shingles?
Yes.
It seems quite high, quite honestly.
Well, we only got two bids the first time, and then, so by the charter of the city here, we had to go up four bids, and the same two people bid on it.
So, John, do you think, and, and, and look, I'm not a roofer, but I deal with enough roofs in my business somewhat daily. It just seemed quite high for, for, for that, and I'm wondering as far as legalese, well, I'm sure we can, just put it out for bid again, and now people will hear it publicly and go out and bid.
But this is just, this is not just for the shingles itself, it's also for fascia boards, and it's also for the four-by-eight sheets also.
Right, but a lot of times, they change those sheets on roofs. It just seems, seems to be quite high, honestly. I'd like to go back out for a rebid.
It's the pleasure of the council, it's just a recommendation on my behalf.
Okay, yeah, let's go on, move on here then. Is there, Councilman Muscat?
I have the same concerns as Councilman Abdullah. Eight thousand dollars, I can do almost a three thousand square foot home, and I don't know how many squares we're talking about here, because I don't know the size of it, but eight thousand dollars can do pretty much, pretty close to a three thousand square foot home, and, and most contractors add in so many square feet of roofing material to be replaced, and then they charge you so much after that amount, so it, I guess it's just food for thought.
Yeah, there's twenty-two squares there, and there's about two hundred and twenty foot of fascia board, and then a unit price for four-by-eight sheets if needed.
Okay, that's about seventeen hundred square feet a foot home then.
Okay.
So this is, I'm sorry, Councilor, if I may add.
Councilman Abdullah?
So it's very similar, is he, because I remember the, I remember when my son played football near there, so I've been into that concession. It is roughly seventeen hundred, maybe two thousand square feet, so it's like a seventeen hundred, two thousand square foot ranch. That is absolutely, positively way too high, fact.
Okay, I can't force people to bid.
I understand.
So, that's a question I've got, I've always had that question, I've always had that concern. I know we put it out for RFPs, why, I, I've never been able to get that. Maybe I don't understand government enough. Why can't we call people, like local people, and I'm gonna just throw a name out here, Walagarski's a local roofing guy, and there's many local roofers, and say, hey, put a bid on this? I mean, why, are we not allowed to do that? Because this is a cra, if we have a seven, if right now a client of mine told me I have a seventeen hundred square foot ranch, and I'm replacing the roof for almost ten thousand dollars, and I want to make it clear for disclosure, I'm not blaming you, I realize that.
Fair enough, I understand.
But if somebody told me they're gonna pay eight thousand dollars, I'd say that's crazy.
All right, let's move on.
We can reach out to them, we can't, you know, we can reach out to them, all we can do is ask, and if they choose not to, a lot of companies don't choose not to work with government, because it can be difficult from time to time.
Amen to that.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, we are on seven A. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Abdullah's opposed. Councilman Bazey is opposed. It passes. Okay, next item on the agenda is reports from mayor. We have appointment to the Dearborn Heights Women's Commission.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move council approve the appointment of Mrs. Rasha Hassan of fifty-one sixty Cherokee Street, Dearborn Heights, to the Dearborn Heights Women's Commission, as outlined in eight A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Mayor?
With, with this particular appointment, I will soon be calling their first meeting.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I follow up with that? How many commissioners are there appointed now? And second thing for reminder, since I wrote that ordinance for that establishing the commission, we do need, and I would recommend, the council body has the authority and should appoint the liaison to that board, to that commission, a council member to be a liaison, the reports back. So I just want to remind you.
Okay.
So the first question to be answered is, how many commissioners are there now?
Four.
Four?
Yes.
And if you're gonna start having meetings, I would recommend an appointment by the council.
I have a question, too. What is the term of this appointment? How long is it? Is it a year, two years, three years? I didn't see it on the actual thing.
Normally, Stephanie takes care of those, she did not put a thing, so I do not.
Yeah, I finished, you forgot.
I'd have to go back and check. Two years, something. Yeah, we could make it two years.
You wanna make it two years? Okay, so then we will say the term is two years in regards to this particular appointment. Okay, any further questions?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I believe we have, aren't you one of the commissioners? So just to be fair and consistent, do you remember how many years yours was for?
They didn't specify yet. We have never had a meeting, and I don't know how many commissioners have made this call.
So Madam Chair, just to be consistent, then, can we make it, whatever years we pick, can we make it for all the commissioners across the board?
Do we want them all to expire at the same time, or do we want to stagger them?
Stagger them.
Stagger them?
It's probably more productive to stagger them, I would think.
Yeah, the council, corporate council's got something here about whatever.
It's whatever the ordinance says, and I don't have that right.
Okay, well, let's check the ordinance, and we'll go by whatever that says.
Probably four years.
And we can actually just go by the actual date that they were originally appointed, even though we haven't had a meeting, so that will start the staggering process, I guess.
So then, we'd, we'd have to amend this as per ordinance.
Okay, well, amend it as per ordinance, and then the Councilman Yaki will get back to us and let us know what the term is.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion in regards to this? So this is for the appointment to the Dearborn Heights Women's Commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is veto of motion pertaining to the resolution of the Dearborn Heights City Council on to issue subpoena for records. This time, I will ask our clerk to read our Charter seven dot thirteen in regards to veto by mayor.
Veto by mayor. The mayor shall have the power of the veto of resolutions and ordinances passed by the council. Provided that said veto, with the mayor's reasons in writing, must be filed with the city clerk at least twenty-four hours before the date of the next regular meeting of the council, at which said meeting, the clerk shall present such veto or vetoes to the council. The council may only at said meeting reconsider the vote at which such proceedings were passed and adopted, and if so, elects, may only at said meeting re-adopt such proceedings by a five-sevenths vote of all the members elected. In the event, the veto shall be overridden, and it will bar the right of the mayor from any future vetoes of the proposed legislation.
Okay, this time, I'm gonna take nine J and move it, oh, go ahead.
Such proceeding shall then become effective on the following day succeeding such meeting of the council, and ordinances so passed shall become effective immediately thereafter upon publication.
Thank you. Is that it? Okay, at this time, I'm gonna take nine J and move it up to pair it off with this, so it's, we're going in order. It is Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Council Chairwoman Melonowski Maxwell reintroduced for a possible reconsideration of approved motion thirteen dash three eight six, council resolution to issue subpoena for records.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
I move the city council to reintroduce motion nineteen dash three eighty-six, adopted October eighth, two thousand and nineteen, as outlined in nine J.
Yep, okay.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mayor?
I provided the information, I don't need to receive a subpoena, and I don't even, I question, why don't you just send me an email or pick up the phone?
Mayor, I did send you an email, and actually, you did not complete what I had requested.
You did not send me any email.
I will send the second part back again to you.
Please.
Tomorrow, and, because not all the information was provided that was requested. Okay, at this, is my phone? Okay, at this time, is there any further discussion?
Council Chair?
Yes.
When we voted on this, that was a seven-nothing vote, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, we're reintroducing the approved motion of thirteen dash three eight six. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, we have over, city council overrides the mayor veto. Next item on the agenda is reports from city officials. We have Treasurer Riley Investment Funds, a funds report for September thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to a received note and filed investment of funds report from September thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, as outlined in nine A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under reports from city officials, we have Assessor Foucault, the EPA mileage approval.
Madam Chair.
Mayor, we're.
Before you, this goes back, and is the Judge Fikens order, and what happened is, back in the nineties, Fikens ordered all kinds of improvements in the Ekorz Creek Down River Basin. The communities went back to Judge Fikens and said, we have The communities went back to Judge Fikens and said, "We have no basis for paying for these improvements." He ordered this levy, and it's been on the tax bill ever, ever since. Now, I will tell you, as one homeowner, I do not want to pay higher water rates to, because I can deduct this off my income tax, as many residents can when it's on the property tax, versus through the water bills. This, this, there is not really any opportunity not to include this, and it's been known, and been going on for over 20 years in the city. I don't know, Mr.
Okay, at this time, we do have a motion on the table. We need to proceed with that, because it hasn't even been.
The council didn't have a motion on the table, Madam Chair.
I mean, we have, okay. Well, no, we haven't, it hasn't went anywhere. I'm trying to introduce it. So, this is Assessor Foucault, EPA, mileage approval.
Council Chair. For clarification purposes, I am requesting, oh, I am requesting council approve the mileage for Down River Disposal System Bond, as outlined in 9B with some explanations.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Over a year ago, we went down to the, to this facility to, to look at what we were purchasing. We all had questions about why are we paying for something we already, as taxpayers, owned from the county. The county wanted to get rid of it. They were going to privatize it. That would have taken our rates sky-high, I mean, right through the roof, if we didn't pay for this. One way or another, this is going to get paid for, either by a bond or by higher water rates. There's no escaping it. The Down River Plant will be operational like it is right now, so somebody has to pay for it. It breaks my heart to say this, but my issue was, it was, the, the letter was sent in April, and I guess that's what the complaint is, that I myself forgot about all of this, and we had mentioned that we were going to have some sort of town hall meeting to ask the people how they wanted to do this. And now here we are, almost two months past the deadline, to approve this. This, this is what concerns me. It's always last minute, we have no choice, to approve it. This should have been brought out April, May, June, July, August, September. I, I'm, I'm not blaming anybody for this, but let's face it, it happened, and it should never have happened this way. I, I'm in favor of being able to deduct it off my taxes, but people need to know, and they didn't get the opportunity to know what's going on. People are afraid of their taxes, and my other thing is, I'd like to see Dearborn Heights' portion, because it's only a small section of the city that is going to use that facility. Now, the whole city will pay for it, so that the amount will be very low. It'll be very low to everyone, but I'd like to see Dearborn Heights' portion of that payment compared to the other cities that their entire city is going to be using. And why, and how much are we going to be paying for this? Because I don't want to be at a point where Dearborn Heights picks up the tab for somebody that's not paying.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. We have Councilman Abdullah next.
So, I, I spoke with our assessor, Tony Foucault, and I, like others, have been concerned about the fact that this letter originally was dated April 12, 2019. There's definitely a concern. At the same time, obviously, we'd have to have paid it back in April or not, either way we're going to be owing it. But I do have a concern with the administration not bringing this forward to us for the last five, six, seven, eight months. But in addition to that, I want to speak, I spoke with Mr. Foucault, and he mentioned to me that this particular amount, or not amount, but this particular bills, we've been paying that since 1994, so it's not nothing new. We've been, we as a city have been paying that on a regular basis every single year, so it's not something that's been added in 2019 that we did not have in 2018. As a matter of fact, I quote him, that we have a lower amount now than we did last year. And you mentioned that this will be assessed on the December tax bill, or, or it's going to be taken out of the general fund. Is that correct, Mr. Foucault?
At this point, it will be on the December tax bill, because we don't have any choice. Anything prior to paying for this would have had to been paid by August 31st.
So, this is cost.
So, now, it's not unusual for a court judgment to be put on the tax roll.
So.
So, this is what's going to happen now, it will be on the December tax roll. Last year, our levy was around $1.05. This year, it went down a little bit.
Eighty-nine cents.
So, I inherited this task when I came on board. It's been done this way for years, and what basically we're doing is trying to raise enough tax dollar in the millage with the taxable value that we have to work with, and to make up, you know, that particular levy that we have to pay. So, that's the millage rate against the taxable value that we calculated with adjustments of anything that we collect taxes on. Like, we take the TIF amount out, anything that's captured, we earmark for something else. So, we have a taxable value that we have to work with, and to raise that amount of money, there's $5,000 roughly, we'll take that kind of millage for this particular year.
But if we did not approve it hypothetically, if we did not approve this hypothetically, and you mentioned to me, we've been paying this for 20 years, give or take, add or subtract a little bit.
And on the tax roll.
Right, so presuming hypothetically it did not pass today, what would happen then? So, it's not like a resident would not pay this at all. It's not like that's a choice.
Again, it's a, it's a county type of mandating, so, which was, like I say, a court order.
This is a court order.
So, whether, I don't know.
I know, I'm just trying, I'm, I'm trying to clarify, because I don't want people to get the impression that we're assessing them a higher tax now. We're not.
This is something that's been around for 20 years, so that's what I'm trying to clarify. So hypothetically, if the council today said no, and I'm using hypotheticals, I'm not speaking on behalf of the council, what would happen then? Either you, or maybe our council can answer.
We would potentially, the county would probably end up turning around, bring a petition in the court, and potentially have us held in contempt, and maybe have elected officials who want to prove it, held in contempt.
Okay, so in reality, it's not a choice then?
In reality, it's not a choice. It would be a matter of if we were going to end up having a choice, if there is a problem, then we would need to go petition the court.
Madam Chair. Thank you.
Councilman Bazey.
I mean, we heard two different things, it's kind of, somebody, everybody's contradicting here. So, if we've been paying it for 20 years, how come it didn't end up on, at the last budget meeting? I mean, if we have a CPA for a mayor, I mean, that stuff should have been addressed at the last council, I mean, the last budget meeting. I mean, if this was introduced in April, and over here, it says it has to be paid prior to August 31, 2019, which we passed, it doesn't make sense.
It doesn't, it's late. Why weren't, why weren't we on time in paying this? And is there any penalty because we're late? Or is the penalty, we have a judge now telling us we have to sign it?
If you're going to pay, what it says here is, within the community, assess taxes on taxable value within the community on December 1, 2019, sufficiently to pay the following judgment payment installment, unless such installment is paid prior to August 31, 2019, as provided in this letter. So, it's not late, it needs to be assessed. In other words, if the city was going to end up paying the entire amount of $1,024,000 and some additional dollars, then, then if we took it out of the general fund and paid it that way, then we wouldn't need to end up putting it onto the taxes.
And also too, I got to say, I don't take it lightly, being threatened that if we don't pass this, we could be liable. That's not the way we're, that's not what we're here for though.
No, it's factually accurate, I'm sorry, yeah, well.
So, that's a threat that we need to pass it, or?
I'm not making any threat. I am just telling you what the, the US District Court Judge, I think Judge Cox is now the assigned judge. He's not going to mess around if we don't end up paying this, and I don't think the county is either.
Councilman Muscat. I got Councilman Muscat next.
Sorry, the, the, Councilman. You know.
I'm sorry, I had.
We, we had this in front of us a, a year or so ago, and people called me, "Don't approve this, don't do this, don't do that because of April." I understand that this brought up late in the game, and, and I'm sorry that it brought, brought up late in the game. And, and we should have had a hearing, like I thought we were going to have it, we discussed it, and we all said we were going to have a public forum to let people know what was going to happen. When I received my calls today, and I did respond to people, and I said, "There's more, please don't vote for it," I said, "There's more to this than what meets the eye." And what, what meets the eye is, we have been paying for this all along. It's not something new. It's like a shift from one side to the other side of money that's been being paid. And again, I'm going to tell you, if, if, to me, if we don't do this, and, and the water rates will go up for the whole city to pay for this, because traditionally, this city, when it's been associated with water, correct me if I'm wrong, someone, the whole city has shared in each section of the city, the whole city's shared into it. So, this is only $1 million that we're looking at here, and it's not like it's 20, 30, 40 million dollars. So, I just want to make that clear. I don't like having to pay taxes either, but somewhere along the line, we're going to pay for it either through high water rates, which will be 15, 20% to pay for this, or do I put it on my tax rolls and get something back when I file taxes? That's all I want to say, and that's for those who can do that.
Okay, thank you. We have Councilman Conston, I'm sorry, I apologize, I totally forgot. Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, just quick, I was.
We got to make sure, Councilwoman Wensel, did you have anything? Councilwoman Hicks Clayton? Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
So, I had a question. So, if this is something that we have no choice with, and I, I don't worry about going to jail for this type of stuff, so that's a whole nother conversation, but.
Yeah, I know neither.
If this is something that we have to do, and we have no choice, and it's illegal, and you'll go to court, or go to jail, or whatever, why are we even voting on it then? What's there to vote on?
Because we have to, we could end up being in a position, if there are other ways to essentially address it. Councilman Muscat raised last year something about some other way to basically be able to potentially use some other funds. Maybe we would end up being able to address it in that way. Of course, if, if that was the thinking, then you would potentially end up getting a opinion from Miller Canfield to make sure that we would be able to do that correctly.
Could this come out of the water fund, since it is?
Yeah, it's water.
It's CSO.
CSO, why aren't we taking out of our CSO?
We have the over-captor CSO money, $3 million.
We've got extra money in there.
Then, if you're going to do something along those lines, I don't know about the other stuff, but I would strongly advise that you would need to get an opinion from Miller Canfield, our bond counsel, and make sure that they say it's fine, and if it is, then, then that could end up being addressed.
Yeah, we should have looked at this earlier. Like I said, we're behind the eight ball now, we're already past what we should have paid it by. It's just really sad. Councilman Abdullah.
Can we then bump this to the next meeting and have Canfield, the, the law firm of Canfield, look this, look into it down there?
Yeah, let's, let's look at that option, I think that's a good idea.
Paying out of the water fund?
Out of the CSO fund, or, for, for, for debts owned? I mean, that's a debt that we owe.
Okay, we have a, we have to, we have a motion, we do have to vote on, so.
Those are two different projects, you can't use the CSO money for that, that payment?
Well, I believe that there's an opinion.
Yes.
That says we can use it to pay down debt.
Only CSO debt?
Not, not, and that's not what the, we have paperwork from Miller Canfield that says differently, so we'd like to have that other opinion.
So, we're going to look for Miller Canfield to give us an official opinion.
There it is, right there. And I've seen that document.
Can I just?
All right, go ahead.
Say one thing, just be mindful that you have three CSO projects to do the next three years.
Correct.
That are mandated by the state, right? And.
You need to be mindful of that.
Yes, we do. We do have CSO projects.
Do you want me to read this? I mean, it does say here, the opinion that the city should use this surplus CSO mileage proceeds to pay any debt service on existing city bonds, which is already existing, and Wayne County obligations that were issued for CSO improvements, or federally mandated sewer system improvements.
No, then it's a clarification, and that would not be allowed, because if that's the case, okay, I just want to, just repeat this. It's an opinion of Miller Canfield, Paddock, and Stone, opinion that the city should use the surplus CSO mileage proceeds to pay debt service on existing city bonds, which this would not be, correct?
Well, this is a judgment levy, and I don't know that it would be.
I guess we need an opinion.
I will, I might clarify. And Wayne County obligations that were issued for CSO improvements, or, which, this wouldn't be, or federally mandated sewer system improvements, which this is not federal, correct?
Well, yeah, I believe it, it could be. Because this was, this was an action, I mean, I remember being like a brand-new assistant city attorney, and appearing before Judge Fikens, and it was in federal court.
Oh, it was, okay, then I apologize.
So, and it was based on claims by the EPA and by the, I think it was the Department of Natural Resources at that time.
Based on that, you could, but let's get.
Let's get an opinion, because we're not attorneys, okay?
But remember, folks, we, like, like, like our DPW director said, we have three CSO projects coming up. One way or another, we're going to pay to Piper, however you want it planned.
This is true.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I make one comment?
We have a motion on the, on the table here, Councilman, Councilman Wensel, you have something?
Just a quick comment. I'm voting no on this, just for the pure fact that the way it is brought to us, and we had this in the past, I want to make the point that we, we can't tolerate this kind of thing that brought to us at the last minute, the cable studio, six months ago, is going to fall down if we didn't approve it that day. I'm just going to make the point, and I'm voting no on this, just to make the point.
I have to agree, the way it was brought at the last minute, I'm not happy with that.
Well, Madam Chair, I thought we agreed that we were going to get an opinion.
Right, so we have to vote our motion down, and then we go for the opinion. That, that's the procedure.
I think we revise the motion that we hold off, that we hold off on this, I made the motion.
Okay, go ahead, then.
That I, I, I moved to amend my motion that we table this till the next city council meeting until we get an opinion.
Support.
As outlined in 9B.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Conston is opposed. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Community and Economic Development Director Hashem. This is CDBG Notices of Public Disclosure for Conflict of Interest.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Community and Economic Development Department Director Joe Hashem, that per the HUD, per HUD requirements to adequately provide for public disclosure of conflict of interest relating to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG programs, and the attached notices require no action on the part of the city council, as outlined in item 9C.
Support.
Support by Councilman Mus.
Madam Chair.
Wait a minute, supported by, or?
Support, yeah.
Supported by Councilman Muscat.
He wanted to address something on that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure from our counsel, Gary Miyaki, do I have to, for this particular disclosure, I know we have it in writing, but I have to name the specific people, or no?
No, they don't want to be named.
No, okay. Just want to show follow-up rules.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have DPW Director Selmy, the 2019 Pacer Rating Program.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moved to concur with Director of Public Works, John Selmy, and authorize the completion of the 2019 Pacer Road Ratings as required to receive Act 51 funding from the state of Michigan, cost not to exceed $14,000, as outlined in 9D.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? Councilman Muscat.
What account does this come from?
This will come out of the Act 51 monies.
Act 51, okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
And I would like to, I'd like to thank Lynn for saving those $500.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, next item on the agenda is Human Resources Director Sabota Perry, Uliance Employee Assistance Program Contract.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Director Elizabeth Sabota Perry, requesting mayoral concurrence and honorable city council's approval to continue our contractual relationship with EAP provider, Uliance. And attaches the proposal for Uliance offered to the city of Dearborn Heights, per the agreement, you will, we will see a cost per employee has remained at $2,050 per month and $30 per year. This translates to approximately $2,000 per quarter for the city of Dearborn Heights, as outlined in item 9F.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item, under Park and Recreation Deputy Director Conston, we have the SMART contract.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Deputy Director for Parks and Recreation, Kim Conston, with enclosed copy letter from SMART regarding the attached municipal and community credit contract for fiscal year 2020, and the city of Dearborn Heights will receive $56,810 in municipal credit monies, and $90,751 in community credit monies. And they need these three contracts with original signatures and a copy of the city council motion, motion authorizing appropriate officials to sign, and they must sign all three copies. This is the mayor and the clerk, as outlined in item 9G.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I'd just like to commend our deputy director, Kim Conston, for the continued work on behalf of our residents with the SMART program, so I don't know where you're at, but good job.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item, under Park and Recreation Director Hadad, it's the Recreation Master Plan.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moved to concur with Parks and Recreation Director Brian Hadad, and award the Recreation Master Plan bid to Fleisen Van Der Brink. Master Plan is not to exceed $9,900, as outlined in item 9H.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you. I want to say thank you again to Parks and Recreation Director Hadad for moving this item forward along the, you know, to get it across the finish line, because it's very important, because that does impact the opportunity for grants for our parks, which I, we could talk a little bit about Van Halton, because that was on the radar, but things like that, this was important to get done, but since our current plan had expired in 2018. So, again, thank you for moving that ball along the, the goal line there, and, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Abdullah.
Just want to commend all three presenters that we had. I do agree with the director, and good job working on it, again, just like the councilwoman mentioned. I would have preferred, honestly, weight trim, because they're more familiar with our city, but at the same time, though, their cost factor is almost double, and, and I agree with the director, I had a conversation even with him about it. So, the only concern I've got with Fleisen Van Der Brink, they had a good presentation. We got a, I don't know where the director is at, can't see him. There he is. But let's just make sure that we hold him accountable. One of the things that I know you liked is the fact that they were going to go out after a lot of grants, which is great, free money, love it, but let's hold him accountable to that, because that's what he presented, and that's what he said is his main gig, and his price is great compared to the rest. The other thing is, I, I want to see, I'm going to hold you, and I'm going to hold our administration accountable, start implementing, because one of the concerns I had is the last master plan that we had was, okay, I mean, great, good, bad, doesn't matter. Very little of it was implemented, so I, I hope, and I, I plan, and I know the rest of our council people are planning on holding you guys accountable to follow through with this thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move forward here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Volta Torney, purchase and payment of Cell Bright Forensic Mobile Device Examiner with training certification.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move city council approve the purchase and payment for the Cell Bright Forensic Mobile, Mobile Device Examiner with training certific, certification. The cost is $16,599.99. I don't know why they didn't make it $16,600, and it will be taken, it'll be taken from the federal forfeiture account. There will be an annual cost of $4,770, which includes service and software updates, as outlined in 9I.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Great tool, great tool to have. Thank you.
Councilman Abdullah.
No, just wanted to say I spoke with the chief about this, and one of the concerns I had, and you addressed them, so I thank you for that, but one of the concerns I had initially was, are we overstepping our boundaries a little bit, getting into too much of people's personal lives and personal information, what have you, and I just want to, in case for the residents, clarify what you had mentioned, that this is not getting additional information, this is just quicker, better, faster, and it makes your lives a lot easier to catch the bad guys, so good job.
Through legal means or consent?
I'm sorry?
Through legal means or consent?
Yeah, court consent, correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, under ordinances and resolutions, we have Councilman Muscat. This is the second reading of proposed ordinance H-19-08 on solicited written materials.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move city council adopt the second reading of the ordinance, God, I can't even see the number right here.
H-19-08.
Yeah, H-19-08, I guess this weekend has got me kind of confused. Of unsolicited written materials, as outlined in 11A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
This is going to help clean up our city. I don't know how we send the message out to the newspaper companies, I don't know if a letter has to be written with a copy of the ordinance by our corporation council that they get the message that this stuff is not going to be tolerated anymore. Is that-
Well, or Mr. McIntyre, since he would be enforcing it typically.
Yeah, but you know, to try to catch these people-
You want me to do it, I can do it.
I mean, a letter from somebody to the newspaper saying, and a copy of the ordinance be presented to them.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further discussion? Clerk, Mr. Clerk.
Councilman Muscat, can you include an effective upon publication?
Oh, yes, and this be done on, upon publication, become effective upon publication, as outlined in 11A.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next we have Seacrest Wardle, first reading of amendment to Chapter 37, that's a small cell wireless communications facilities.
If you recall-
We have a motion, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
We have to, we have to-
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move that ordinance number H-19-09 be considered read for the first time.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Okay, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey? Well, they have to, yes, they, let's see if anybody wants, it's probably going to be questions for them. Go ahead.
I don't understand why Dearborn Heights is putting in this ordinance so quickly. I've talked to a few other cities, surrounding cities, I even talked to somebody from the state just a few days ago, and I think we're hurrying in putting this ordinance in place that we still don't know what the effect, health effect to the residents, and also where these towers or these instruments will be actually installed, at what poles, if it's going to be in people's backyard. Again, I mean, obviously, I'm not going to approve this, but that's one of my concerns while we're doing something that a lot of surrounding cities, they're not even putting in an ordinance as of yet to see what the state is going to come out, and as you know, Grand Rapids was the last city to turn this down just recently.
Okay, would you like to address that?
Sure.
Thank you.
The process for doing this is set forth in federal and state regulations and laws. What this ordinance does, it empowers the city to control to the extent the federal and state has allowed local control. This allows the city to exercise that local control. Without it, the city doesn't have any control, and it's strictly done by federal and state regulations and laws. So if the city wants to have some control over it, you need an ordinance, which is why we drafted this ordinance. This matter was presented to you several months ago. It was referred to the Planning Commission because although it's not a zoning ordinance amendment, it does have some impact upon land use. In our estimation, it's been consistent in our law firm that if anything affects land use, it should follow the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act process. It was referred to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission advertised it for a public hearing. Nobody appeared for the public hearing, there were no comments offered. Again, it's here for a first reading. What I wanted to say is if you are going to consider adopting this, that at the second reading, if the ordinance is adopted, there are some related forms that were also included in your packet that should be approved after the adoption of the ordinance, if you so choose.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I just want to get a clarification for Mr. Roberts. So you're saying if we don't adopt this, it's going to be at the discretion of these companies as far as where they could put up these antennas, et cetera?
If they're in compliance with the state and federal regulations, they can put them in. I would note that we have, I forgot the exact number, but there are pending applications in the city already, which is part of the reason there's a need for this ordinance. We've worked with representatives of the providers so that we could develop the process to adequately review it and have the control that were allowed by state and federal law. They've agreed to, although they could press it, they have agreed to allow us to consider this ordinance adoption prior to moving forward formally with their applications.
What about the concern from the repercussions of this thing? I mean, I've seen so much stuff online, emails, the whole nine yards, videos, YouTube, the whole, I mean, you can name whatever you want to name. The repercussions of this particular type of stuff, why is it that we as a city cannot say we want to stop it, moratorium, something, until we can figure out a little bit more by our experts whether this could have the potential, you know, health risks that a lot of the data that I'm seeing, you know, like I mentioned through different venues on this stuff, why is it that we can't stop it?
The simple answer is it's been taken out of your hands by the federal and state government. That's why.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
It's always referred to as a few companies, and none of the companies have ever been named, and you've dealt with the companies personally, so Verizon is one of them, I know that, because they had a surveying crew on my street last week, and what they're doing is they're giving, the survey crew is given locations where they want to put these antennas, and the survey crew goes out and they look at these poles, and one of the poles is in my backyard. And they surveyed it, I have five little children living with me, and they look at all the area, they find, and said, this one's a good one, and over here's a good one, and here's a good one. So the guy that was running the survey company told me that Sprint offers free unlimited data, and there's only one reason why they're putting these 5G antennas up, is to compete with Sprint's and offer higher, higher speed internet, and it's the only reason they're doing it. It's not just a great thing that's going on, it's to compete with Sprint. Verizon has 16 times as many customers as Sprint does, but it costs them a fortune to offer free data, and they're not going to do it, they're going to jeopardize everyone's health with this, and there's not one thing, I want, I want a billion-dollar liability policy, maybe 200 billion for this. This is ridiculous that we have no, I think we should stick up to this, refuse everything that comes across our table to us, I don't care. The ordinance would only allow us to say, oh, you can't put it by this school, or by this church. They want to put it in your backyard, it's going in your backyard. When there's no ordinance, that'll stop them from doing it.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Coniston.
Thank you. Yeah, if everybody understands, so this is a necessary evil, I guess we can go back to then State Representative Annie Dillon, who helped push through the, what was called the AT&amp;T franchise bill, giving the cities less and less control. Everybody's concerned about 5G, the higher data, more dense data. I am too, but this allows us, the limited amount that we're allowed under federal and state law, some control over where some of these devices are positioned, so it, by voting for this, we're not voting to allow the 5G by doing nothing, we're allowing companies like Verizon more-
Freedom.
Freedom, more free hand.
If I can address that point, if the city wants some say on where these things go, you need an ordinance. Absent an ordinance, they're going to put it wherever they're allowed to under federal and state regulations.
Correct.
So just to clarify, we'd be working against our residents-
Councilman Muscat would be recognized.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Councilman Abdullah.
So just for clarification, because I plan on voting no on this, is what I planned on, but I don't want to vote no if it's going to be hurting the residents, so for clarification, if we vote no on this, which is what I planned on originally, you're telling me, and I want to make sure you say it publicly, I'd be working against our residents, taking rights away.
What I'm saying publicly, as I've stated before, as I stated, and Mike Solhany was with me at the meeting several months ago, if you want some ability to regulate the location of these, you need an ordinance. If you want to allow the federal and state regulations to control, you don't need it.
Scary stuff.
So we need our, we don't want to give up our control.
Council Chair, you know, we, I don't want anybody else-
You have a question?
Yeah, it's not a question, it's a statement about how you vote, so to me, you know, I'm against 5G, but we have to have some say, and this gives us some say. We got to start somewhere, and this is the place to start with this, I believe.
Thank you.
I would note, to address that point, the ordinance does provide that if there is a change in federal and state laws-
Right.
-we can go back and amend anything that we've done under this ordinance. That's written into the ordinance in the occasion that perhaps other voices come out and persuade other levels of government to change course.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, at this point, this is for the first reading of amendment to Chapter 37, Small Cell Wireless Communications Facility. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No. No.
Councilman Bazey is opposed? Councilman Wenzel is opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, resolution to support Michigan House Bill 4739, also known as Liliana's Law.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to adopt the resolution to support Michigan House Bill 4739, Liliana's Law, by the Dearborn Heights City Council, as outlined in 11C.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
All right, Madam Chair, one, I want to thank you, by the way, for having the, I'm going to cry, having the courage to do what you're doing, what you've continued to do. I know you've been in Lansing, you've met with Senator Betty Jean Alexander's office. We're doing what we can through that office to support you, and looking at some other avenues, including increasing the penalties for some of those violations you read off. That's another part that needs to be discussed. Councilbody, I ask for your support of this resolution, I'm going to, there's one reason why. One is too many. Okay, this child lost her life. One is too many. She's not the only one who has lost her life in Michigan to this, and that is something that is totally preventable.
Amen.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mayor?
Would the maker and the supporter of the motion allow that, say, let it be resolved the Dearborn Heights City Council and the Dearborn Heights Mayor supports? Would you be willing to include me in this resolution, because I pretty much like to?
Yes, absolutely, and also if the city clerk is interested, and I know our city treasurer's not here, but traditionally, we do that, and so, absolutely.
If you would.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I'd like the record to reflect, and I'm going to go on the line and say this, that the support of this motion comes from the entire council, not just from one person.
Thank you.
I'd like the record to show that, if it's agreeable with all of you.
Oh, yeah. Any further discussion? Okay, this is the resolution to support Michigan House Bill 4739, also known as Liliana's Law. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Yeah.
Okay, next, we have members of the public, this is comments from council members at the table. Council Chair. Councilman Wenzel.
Well, after hearing the presentation of Liliana, I haven't been thinking straight at this meeting, because I lost a daughter, and I have a two-year-old and a four-year-old at home. It really hits me hard, but I want to go back to consideration of bid 7A and change my vote, and I urge another council member that agrees, it's the bids for the roof on the concession stand.
Mr. Clerk, would you please advise how we go about that?
There is reconsideration, as long as it happens during this meeting.
Okay.
I'd like to change my vote to no, and I urge one other member that voted yes to change their vote too, please. Can you give me a reason why? The bid is way too high.
Too high.
Elbow where it should be, and we can't stand by and just, Director Salmy did say he would do something.
I'll change mine to no. Madam Chair? Let me ask a question to that. Because what we heard the director say is that bids were open and no one bid, what is, how are you, are, where are you? There you are, Director, how are you, would you, we vote no, it takes us back to the beginning of the bid process. How, or what could you do to change that?
For the third time.
Yeah, and what could you do within your power to change the outcome of that, to get more qualified bids, according to the eyes of the council?
We advertise it on all the local websites that are for government products, Mitten, BidNet, those types of places, and that's where we get the bids. I mean, if a council member has somebody he wants to reach out to and have them pull the packet and put a bid in, I'm all for it.
Okay, because we've already had the discussion, so let's reconsider our bids. If you want to, should I take it again, Mr. Clerk? Okay. This is for DPW Director Salmy, award for bid for Parkland Park Concession Building Roof. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
No.
No. Bails.
Good luck.
Boy, we change our minds real quick.
Madam Chair, the good part is, I imagine, because we're going into winter month, it gives you some time.
I was just going to bring that up too, so this probably won't get done anytime soon, but we'll put it back out there.
Maybe we need to look at how we're bidding it, if there's other options besides the way we're going about it, because obviously, it's not working for us.
These are the places that municipalities put their bids on.
Okay, there shouldn't be, you can do it through an open comment though.
Okay.
Okay, so-
I have two other things. I'd like to apologize to building maintenance director, I think he's director, Mike Blackburn. Last meeting, I brought up the fact that the flags were not kept up in good condition when, in fact, they were. I misspoke, I'd like to apologize, because he's doing a great job, especially there on the south end, the people are really happy to have him and the work that he's doing out there, and thanks, Mike, and I'd like to acknowledge all of our veterans, and please have all our veterans stand, please. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Abdullah.
Well, just want to say to Director Salmy in regards to this, I get RFPs on big ticket items, I get that, you know, you can't put something like this on Facebook, but for something like this one, I would suggest, it's as simple as just putting on a roof that any roofer can put, like they do on houses, put it on our Facebook page. Right now, we've got great publicity for, of course, local roofers. Go in and bid. I mean, I'm sure we could find somebody for three, four, maybe even, worst case, $5,000, hopefully, throwing numbers out, because 8,500 or 100, definitely, I know it's not your fault, so I'm not blaming you, but local roofers, go out and bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Real quick, I have a question, Director McIntyre. The property, there's a grass field, it looks like a vacant lot, right, that is behind Dock State or, between Dock State or Ford East of Inster Road. Is that city-owned or who owns, I don't care who owns it, I guess my question is, it needs to be cut.
Right, they own.
And you'll be able to address it, you want me to send you an email, or you got it now?
Yes.
You got it now, good job, thank you. The other thing is from DPW Director, most likely, Van Houten Park update, because there's been a lot of publicity on that park, there were a lot of concerns, and again, thank you to our residents, who brought that forward, by the way, with use of social media, and when I was contacted, I did reach out to one of our department heads, which wasn't available, and of course, it was a Friday, and everyone's busy, but I did meet with them, and the intent, again, the residents made some really great points, and I spoke made some really great points, and I spoke to Director Salmy, as well as Director Haddad, who both have been wonderful trying to move this forward. But do you have an action plan for us to share on those improvements that are needed?
So as far as the improvements are going, there's been no improvements. They — we have removed all the overgrown grass. We have made the chips safe in there. We have tightened all the screws and nails that this thing was put together with. To my opinion, it's probably not even compliant anymore.
Yeah.
Probably, for a compliance matter, it needs to come down.
Yes, and I imagine we need to do something with playground inspections on a regular basis.
So I've talked to the building maintenance people. I have signed up for My Parks. They offer that in the springtime. Typically, that was done by park employees, I'm told, but there are not full-time park employees that work in the parks anymore.
Okay.
So somebody will have to assume those duties.
Okay, thank you. I just have one more. It's more just a comment, because I know it's getting late. I know, I haven't eaten.
Shorten us a little bit here.
I got that. You know, this was brought up earlier about the water rate decrease that was voted on by this councilbody. I don't recall the vote, if it was seven to zero, or what it was. It may be — was it seven to zero? Thank you. I'm really disappointed, because, you know, certainly, I understand we've got some things going on now with the lead, you know, the lead leads that have to be replaced, and that's gonna cost us, I think it's like $5,000 average per home, with 173 homes. But my thing is, is that the councilbody voted on that, and it was passed back to the council that we were responsible for doing the formula. And I really am gonna tell you right now, I don't buy that, because we're not experts. We don't do formulas. That's what, you know, you have your, you know, your comptroller, all due respect, your plant manager, and whoever. When I look through the records that I have here that go back to 1991, 1999, I mean, they — there's a formula you have for that. And that formula, that 10%, in my mind, could have made a difference for many people, possibly. We have seniors who are having, you know, fixed incomes, anybody on a fixed — which is all of us, fixed incomes. That 10% could have made a difference the last six months for them, and now, of course, we're faced with probably increasing the rates, as it is, because of the infrastructure. And I acknowledge that. I'm just really disappointed that we had that passed back to us, and it was delayed for six full months. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment from Councilman Muscat?
Just two, two, just two statements here. First, I want to tell the people to be a little bit more respectful to your neighbors, especially on trash pickup day. We all know it's illegal to park your car in the street on trash pickup day. But if you insist on parking your car in the street, park it in front of your own home, so other people can at least get their trash picked up. Too many complaints am I receiving about people just running outside and moving their car in front of someone else's home, just so their trash can be picked up. Get your car off the street, I implore you. I beg you. I thank you for it. Second of all, I received a letter in my city mailbox. I don't know if everybody else got it. It says, please do something about this. People from ordinance department come to streets, no cars marked. Go walk through driveways, walk by windows, very scary. Cars need to be marked. All ordinance vehicles are marked, all of them. And again, there's no name on this. I can't help you if you don't give me a name or phone number. But I assure you, every ordinance vehicle is marked. If you see somebody around your house that's suspicious, you can call the police department. So that's just the statement I'm making, because I don't know who wrote this letter.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Thank you. I saw Mark and Carol Slater here earlier. They left, but just to remind everyone, we still have tickets available, our Dearborn Heights Qantas, for our Veterans' Dinner on November 6th at the Stit Post. Our speaker's gonna be Judge, Wayne County Circuit Judge Ulysses Boykin. And then also, I just want to clarify, on item 9B, the reason I voted no, to send out the issue regarding how we levy the charge, and it's not an additional charge, for the us joining and becoming part of the DUDA, the Downriver Authority that bought the — or is taking over, running the Downriver Wastewater Treatment Plant. I — and thank you for Councilman Muscat and Councilman Abdullah's excellent background and discussion. It's a shame that the former administration, the former county executive, decided to balance the budget by selling the Downriver Wastewater Treatment Plant, something that was built with taxpayer money, but it happened. And the authority was formed to prevent a private company from taking it over, and then they would have a captive audience. They could raise our rates a thousandfold. So the — and I don't know, maybe the information about the village was late, but at this later point, to go out and pay Miller Canfield, which is Detroit's oldest and largest, and I think everyone would agree, one of the most expensive law firms, additional money for an opinion, that's — this attorney thinks that's a waste of money on needless attorney's fees, so just to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bassey?
Actually, a few items, but I'm gonna defer most of them till the next meeting. However, I know Mr. Serini, he's probably gonna address one of the issues I was gonna talk about, which is, I mean, I concur what he's gonna say after, you know, we talk. I mean, I have been to his house, and I know what he's talking about, and it is a concern.
All right, thank you. Okay, any — Mr. Clerk?
As quickly as I can. The election will be in two weeks. If you have requested an absentee ballot, and it's been over a week, call us tomorrow, 791-3432. Do not wait. Do not wait till the last day. We can't fix things when you wait till Monday or Tuesday and call us and say so. So call us now. If you haven't asked for one yet and you want one, call us. Just to note, some few changes. I always tell people if there's changes in the polling. Riverside, we bounced around there in the last year or two, due to some building issues and so forth. We are back. You will use the door on Beach Daily, closest to Warren, back to where we used to vote, in the band room in the room next, precincts seven and eight there. Canfield, there is a change. We will be using half the gym. I'm not sure what precinct is going to be there, 11 or 12. The other precinct will be in the parquet room. Your precinct will be noted on the door and tell you to either go straight or turn right to the parquet room. Robishod, we are back in the cafeteria. We're off the stage this time. We're back in the cafeteria. Annapolis, we are in the, what they call the media room. It's the library. And Polk, they had some renovations going in August, and we were in their library, I believe. We're back in their gym. So if you have any questions, 791-3432. And a couple of quick housekeeping items, Madam Chair, so we don't have to come back. And Councilman Muscat's motion for the newspaper ordinance, we do not have a record of a second. Did anybody remember a second? Councilman Bassey? Okay, thank you. And then on Mr. Wenzel, Councilman Wenzel's reconsideration. Being everybody voted, we needed a second on that.
Second.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilman Abdullah?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good luck to all our candidates in the election. Thank you.
Madam Chair. I want to give you a brief report. I met with DTE, and I am working on setting up a coalition. I found an area mayor who had no power in his house for two days and had to go to a hotel. So — but the thing I need to urge everybody, it's very important that you register power outages directly through the DTE system. If you are having problems, then I would ask that you call in my office, and we can get that registered, because that is the complaint factor that we can utilize against the Public Service Commission and how they regulate DTE and its power outages. So we are tracking that, and we told them of our concern, and I'm building my coalition, and I will keep you informed.
Madam, through the chair, if I may ask the mayor, through the chair, Madam Chair. Thank you. I had talked to the DTE government liaison, and she had mentioned the same thing you just said, so thank you for bringing that up. And the second thing was, they talked about doing — because one thing I requested was a town hall meeting with the residents, so they could keep them informed of what's going on, and they had agreed, and I wanted to see if they got back to you on that sometime in November. Any word?
They would not agree to do that. That came up as a discussion point. They really don't have an interest in doing it. If you let me know, send me an email, who made that commitment, because I had some pretty top, high-level individuals at DTE, and they declined that comment.
I will do that, because I think it involved a vice president, so I will send you that.
If you would.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion from the table? Let's open it up now to community comments. Please limit it to five minutes. You're the next one.
You're the next one.
This is community announcement. Sure, you're after that.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just wanted to touch on a couple of upcoming events. First off, Monday, October 28th, at 6:30 PM at Carolyn Kennedy Library, we will be discussing cell phone photography. Join instructor Debbie Mylan, as she teaches creative and technical tips with your iPhone or phone. Participants will be engaged in hands-on practice during class. People of all skill levels are welcome. Register at 313-791-3800. Next up, Wednesday, November 13th, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM at Carolyn Kennedy Library, we will be taking or talking Detroit's classic TV shows. Join Tim Kiska and Engolek House Soupy Sales, Bill Kennedy, Captain Jolly, and others influenced hearts and minds of baby boomers everywhere. Finally, I want to thank the Friends of the Library for another successful sale. We raised over $3,000 that we used to help programming. I also wanted to thank Matthew Larable and the court for their assistance. That's all for now. Thanks for your time, and see you at the library.
Thank you. Please state your name, and you have five minutes.
Yes, good evening. Greetings, everyone. I'm gonna be really brief. This is definitely after my bedtime. I've been here for a very long time with everyone. But my name is Maurice Edwards. I'm representing my wife and my three kids as well. We are Dearborn Heights residents, and last week, on October 12th, we were victims of a sewage backup that happened on Silvery Lane. And we woke up to having over four feet of sewage in our basement, like everything was floating. And I have a remodeled basement, so I am a veteran as well, so I lost a lot of certificates, discharge papers, different items that were, like, extremely priceless. But to just kind of go back on subject, you know, this here was addressed by a plumber from Road A Ruder that we called after we called our insurance company to make the claim, and they coincidentally did say that it was a city's negligence, the reason why the sewer system backed up the way that it did. And it was definitely a disaster. It was a shock, of course, you know. And most of all, we lost everything, you know.
Sorry to hear that.
Certain things, you really can't put a price tag on. But most of all, the smell was horrible, of course. I had to get my family out of there as soon as possible. We had to stay in a hotel for about five days. But during the day, I had Service Master come out to mitigate the property and clean it up and everything. And they're still, like, they still have humidifiers in my basement right now due to the water damage. And that definitely did, you know, set me back monetarily. And just now, just looking at my basement and looking at how gutted it is, you know, with all of the walls and everything stripped. I actually have a few pictures, if you guys just want to kind of just pass that around.
Have you filed a claim with us?
With the city? Well, right now, I am in the process of filing the claim with the city. I just got the packet in the mail, but I wanted to make sure that I had all my ducks in one row. I wanted to make sure I had the inventory checklist for you guys, as well as the estimates to get things back to the way that it was, and then also the receipts from what I've already spent to get the property cleaned up. But I just wanted to bring that to you guys' attention, that this is time-sensitive, you know? This is not something that I could have waited to get fixed, you know?
We agree. Is the department aware of this, and we check? Okay, because we don't want it to happen again.
Yeah, I mean, you know, of course, this is after the fact. Like, we see trucks on our street every day now, cleaning out the sewers. So great job on that, but I wish it would have been proactively taken care of. If it was proactively taken care of, I wouldn't be in the situation that I'm in right now. And of course, it is a struggle with having three smaller children and having to commute them back and forth to school and get homework done while we're in a small hotel room. You know what I mean? Of course, where we're adapted to live in a certain type of way, and then just boom, out of nowhere, we have to up and move out the house for a few days due to it being inhumane, you know? And like, this is something that I never even thought of, that I would be a victim of, you know? So I am working on getting those documents submitted to you guys, and I just really wanted to bring this to your attention. But like, not only that, our hot water tank and our furnace, of course, was damaged due to the water, or due to the sewage. And then we had to wait to get that, you know, installed. So it's just, it was just chaos, you know? And I just really want to bring that to the city's attention, and that is unacceptable. As a taxpayer, you know, it's just unacceptable. And hopefully, you guys can fix the problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you gonna be here after the meeting?
I've seen the pictures on Facebook.
I'd like to get —
So, okay. Include these pictures with your filing, if you would.
Okay, I definitely will.
And sir, I'd like to get your address before you leave, if you can write it down for me.
Sorry that happened.
I'm so sorry you had to go through this. I know what the — I've been in a basement that's been through that, and it's not.
The basement is remodeled, so we had a bedroom down there. We had, like, an entertainment area, a library. My office was downstairs.
Put your address and your phone number.
You've already started, I know, working with Lee Gavin on this, is that correct? Emergency manager?
Emergency manager.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Mike Blackburn, if I'm not mistaken.
We've got another lady coming up. Is it a community announcement?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good, thanks.
Great.
Well, good evening. How's everyone? Good evening.
Good evening.
Great. My name is Beverlyn Hilton, and I bring you greetings on behalf of our Wayne County Treasurer, Eric Sabree. But for the sake of time, I will just address one issue tonight, and I want to say thank you to our veterans that are here tonight. And Councilman Coniston, I'd like to get the additional information for that event. We would like to attend that as well. But I'd like to extend the invitation to all veterans, spouses of veterans, their family, to a Veterans Resource Fair that the Wayne County Treasurer is hosting on November 21st, from 10 to 2. It's going to be held at Bellagio's, which is in Dearborn Heights. It's at 23900 West Warren. We did leave some flyers here. If that's something your Public Relations Division could put on your Facebook page, that would be great, so that we could let all the veterans know. We're gonna have 25 to 30 different agencies that are providing resources for veterans. So we — it's one of the treasurer's passions. We have programs and services also for veterans. We also are being hosted by our Congresswoman Debbie Dingell, Rashida Talib, and Brenda Lawrence. They're serving as honorary chairs. And of course, the event host for that day will be our own Wayne County Treasurer, Eric Sabree. So we will be addressing health care, employment, housing, utility assistance, and so much more. And I want to thank you for allowing us to give this announcement today, and we will be back at another time to address the forfeiture, foreclosure programs and services that we have, to avoid anyone in the Dearborn Heights community in losing their property. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And have a good evening.
You, too.
Any more community announcements?
Yeah. I'll be real quick. Good evening, councilmembers, city clerk, Mr. Mayor. Brian Hanner from the Parks and Recreation Department. I want to just give you guys' update on a couple things that are going on. This Thursday, at the Eaton Center, or Eaton Senior Recreation Center, is gonna be the Eaton Halloween Party. Then this Saturday, we are gonna be partnering with the Bedford Elementary School to bring a trunk or treat outside of the Richard A. Young Center. It is $2 a person to — $2 a child, I'm sorry. $2 a child to attend, and it serves as a fundraiser for the Bedford Elementary School PTO. And third and last, next Wednesday, October 30th, the Berwin Center is having their Halloween party, and they will be having dueling pianos there for the seniors. And it's gonna be — it's one thing that I love dueling piano, so I'm gonna be there, excited to see it. So thank you very much, and you guys have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Nancy Breyer, this is your last chance to attend one of our meetings this year, and it'll be on Thursday, 7 to 9 PM, at 3335 South Beach Daily. Our speakers in the — well, that would be the Westwood Administration Office, where they have their school board meetings. Nice building. We have two different possibilities for speakers. They both agreed to come. Our own Dearborn Heights Fire Marshal, Doug Bailey, will be coming, and he's done it at senior centers. And for those who haven't had an opportunity, he brings his paraphernalia. You have an opportunity to hold a fire extinguisher and put out a make-believe fire, and you get timed. So So, he will be really good. It's something to see. And this may not appeal to everybody, but in the event you don't put fires out right, our other speaker would probably be talking to your relatives. We have them from Hal Peterson. And it seemed kind of appropriate to put them in with this group. Tom and Tricia are going to give us a video presentation. So, again, it's our last meeting of the year. It'll always be the fourth Thursday. This is our regular place, and we'd love to have you come. And since I did that in fast time, I'd like to put another pitch into Walt. We need help with the election, getting people to do it. It's not that hard. I've done it since I was 21, and that's been a long time ago. Anyhow, I just found out today that my co-chair will not be available. So, there's an opening in Precinct 21 at Thorn School at this point. I don't know if Walt's got an access list here, but it's not that hard. And I don't expect we'll have a big turnout, so you'll have time to do other things like crossword puzzles and read a book. Because sad to say, we don't get usually more than a 10% turnout when we have council positions and local stuff. It's only the big things like next year where it'll be a mess. So, if any of you have time and are willing to help, you do get paid, you meet nice people, and you help your civic community. So, I would recommend you talk to Walt. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public announcements at this time? I will...
I'm sorry, you can come up and speak.
You ready?
Yep. Public comments for you. You have three minutes. Your name, please.
My name's Musa Serini. I'm a resident of Dearborn Heights on 23518 Military. I'm here today to talk about a couple of trees on my property. First of all, I'm sorry, greetings, council members, Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair. Good evening. It's been a long evening I've been sitting here, sorry. I'm here to talk about a couple of trees on my properties that are very hazardous and very dangerous to me and to my family. These are black walnut trees. For anybody here that has any on their properties, they are very mature trees. They tower something like 60 feet up in the air. We've lived at this house for over six and a half years, and every year, we go through three months, almost a fourth of our year is spent where we cannot use our backyard. It's, the backyard just gets hijacked by these trees. These trees are a risk to me, to my grandkids, to my neighbors, to my, anybody that visits my house, to the kids playing in the yard from my neighbors. I got a list of 19 issues here. I'm not going to read them. Everybody start. So, I'm just going to skip to what I did. So, we decided this year to take these trees down. It's just been too much of a high maintenance, too much of a high risk. I literally have to wear a hard hat to be in the backyard and to mow my yard. And I've picked up over 20 to 50, given how much they produce each year, 20 to 50 bushes a year of these walnuts that I can't get rid of. I put them in the canisters for the Department of Public Works to pick up. They're too heavy for the trash guys, so they don't take them. So, I end up splitting them up. It's just been a mess. So, we finally decided to take these trees out. We've contacted and gotten bids from different companies, and we've settled on one company to settle with this bid. I can submit this letter after, if you like. It's going to cost a fortune to get rid of these trees. These are very, very expensive trees. So, the company that I settled to get these trees taken out with contacted me and said, "Mr. Serini, you have to apply for a permit. There's, in your city..." By the way, some of the other vendors were not even giving me bids in Dearborn Heights. They just don't want to do it. So, but this vendor agreed to do it, and they said they would apply for the permit on my behalf. I said, "Sure, no problem. Go ahead and do it." They called me on a Saturday, and they said, "There's one silly question we'd like to ask you. It's on part of the permit, and we have to ask you." I said, "Go ahead, what is it?" They said, "This is going to sound silly, but when you remove a tree, you have to replace it." I said, "All right, no problem." I was planning on putting a tree up anyhow. They said, "Okay, we'll answer that on the application for the permit and let you know." That Monday, a city inspector showed up at the house, looked at the situation. My daughter called me, said that he was here. He called me up. He identified himself as one of the city inspectors from the Department of Public Works, and he said, "These are awfully big trees." I said, "Well, yeah, I know they are. I can see your mess. I mean, these things cause havoc. They've broken through plastic, plastic gutters. They've torn my gutters right off the house in some cases. They've just gotten so heavy." So, in any case, he calls me, and he said, "These are awful big trees. We might have to replace them with four trees." I said, "Why?" He said, "Well, you have to replenish the oxygen back to the city from your trees. But because these are big trees, I'm going to allow you to just put one for one. You take one out, you put one in." I said, "Okay, no problem." Mind you, I've got seven mature trees on my property, not to mention another nine or 10 arborvitus that are huge, as high as the ceiling. So, I'm not sure why I'm being held to all of the oxygen to the city. But that's another story. I said, "Okay, I'll replant two trees. That's no problem." He says, "Well, they have to be a certain height and a certain diameter." I said, "Well, wait a minute. That's not something I can get from the nursery or Home Depot. You're asking me to go hire a professional?" He says, "Yeah, basically, that's what we're asking you to do, and have somebody get it in for you." I'm like, "This is crazy." "Well, that's the ordinance, sir. Or I can contribute $250 for each tree to something called the City Tree Fund." Apparently, all this is in some ordinance somewhere. I can't find it myself. So, that's $500 out of my pocket that's going to go to some tree fund. I don't know who controls this tree fund, but if there is such a tree fund, I would like to apply to it as a candidate and have that tree fund replenish the two trees that he wants me to put in. I don't know where that tree fund is. So, I'm here to appeal to the council to allow me to plant the trees that I can buy from either English Garden or Home Depot or wherever I choose from. This is my property after all. And I liked your speech about being responsible citizens. And for this ordinance to be revisited, really, I mean, this is crazy. This is unreal. Like I mentioned, I've got over seven mature trees on my property, not to mention the arborvitus. And it's not that I'm against trees, don't get me wrong. Anybody in the family that knows me knows how I love to garden, knows how I love to plant trees and shrubs and take care of them and trim them. I take it very seriously. But these two particular trees are a risk and a hazard to my family, and I want them out. It's costing me a fortune, and I shouldn't have to punch, push out another $500 for God knows what. I don't know where this fund is. And I shouldn't have to put out, you know, $65 for the permit. No problem, I'll pay it. But allow me the time. Oh, by the way, and there's a time limit. I had to commit to either four months or six months to replace these stupid trees. But allow me the six month. Let me put up the trees I choose and address this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Abdullah?
Just two quick questions. What was the address again?
23518 Military.
Okay, and then it's in your backyard?
One tree is actually in my backyard and one just outside the fence. These trees are less than 15 feet apart. They're not, they've been there.
You said inside the fence, but in the backyard, or?
And, well, I'm a corner house, so yeah, it's outside the backyard. It's 15 foot away from the one that's inside the yard.
The reason I'm asking, I mean, I don't know who could answer this. I'm sure Jack, if you could answer this. Does he have to replace them if they're in the backyard also?
Yeah.
Legacy.
Yeah, party ordinance has a...
It's a safety hazard. Yeah, it's really administered from DPW, but it's an ordinance that the council passed?
It's a Chapter 33 Vegetation. That's the ordinance. So, that's what we go by. If the council wants to change that, we'll abide by that.
That's a safety hazard.
I'm here to plead for you to change that.
I feel for you, because I've got so many friends that are complaining about the same type of trees, either with their neighbors or in their yard, and causing damage to their property too, because they, those things are hard. When they hit, they damage.
If I show you the pictures of the kind of plastic that they penetrate, you won't believe...
Oh, no, I believe it. I've seen...
You think I actually pushed that through the...
Your only concern is just...
You want to remove the...
Your main concern is the 250, the 250, they're asking you to do that towards that tree fund.
I'll replace the trees, but let me buy them from wherever I choose.
Buy your own trees?
Yes.
And Director Solme, I mean, is it that specific? It has to be that type of tree, et cetera, et cetera? I don't have it in front of me, so I don't...
I don't, I don't have it memorized. I certainly can look into that. I don't memorize all the ordinances.
His is considered a legacy tree.
And I wasn't here when this council or whatever council passed all this, so...
Okay, because I know people have taken trees down, and they could just put a tree...
Yes. I just, once we, what we do...
Mr. Mayor, legacy or not, these are hazards to my family. They got to go.
I'm not, I'm not opposing what you want to do. I'm just explaining, because I was here when a previous council came up with this ordinance.
It's also costing me a fortune to remove them. It's not going to be cheap.
Councilman Wenzel?
You know, black walnut is a very sought-after wood for woodworkers. Have you ever looked into having someone come in and pay you to take your trees down?
Honestly, the company that's going to take them down said that they like to move them in big trunks and take them to the dump. So, no...
They're not going to take them to the dump.
I don't know what they're going to do.
They're not taking them to the dump. They're going to resell those.
I've had family members have those trees stolen from their property because they're so valuable.
Tom comes to these.
I don't know where the thieves are, but give them my address.
Free wood? Look into it.
Counselor Chair?
Councilman Bazey is next.
I actually been to the house, and I've seen a few actually come down, and they comes in like around. And when they hit, it explodes. And if they hit the kid, you know, that is a safety hazard. I was there when they were coming down.
Oh, yeah.
And they do come down pretty hard. And if there's a kid, it's walking or...
You know, I abide by the ordinance, but I think I've always never liked that ordinance. Man's home is his castle. And for someone to come in and say you can or cannot take a tree down, or, to me, is the most ridiculous ordinance that we've had, even though we do got to protect our trees. But we have a lot of trees that are on the city side of the properties, okay? That we can't touch. But to tell someone that, "Hey, it's going to cost you this much more, and you got to do this, and you got to do that," to protect his family, I think is a bunch of baloney.
Well, for safety reasons...
And I'll, and if it takes me to go ahead and try to change that ordinance, I will do it, sir.
I'm seriously here asking all the council members to consider that ordinance again. I can't find it on the net.
We do have it.
I'm not sure where it sits.
It is there.
You know, I think when safety is a concern, it, there should be exceptions made.
Absolutely.
I didn't even mention the dead trims, the dead limbs that it generates daily. I didn't even mention the damage that it's caused to my cars when I go to give the leases back and have to pay for the damages from the limbs that fall down, or the nuts themselves. These trees have hijacked my backyard and part of my driveway. And Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to give you a copy of the pictures and the letter.
And Mr. Corporation Counsel, what do we do about safety?
Well, we could revisit, maybe have a study session.
But what is that going to do for him right now?
Well, he could, well...
I mean, it is a safety thing.
They're not exactly just the trees coming down. They're part of the ordinance. What's built into the ordinance are replacement costs for legacy trees. So, I don't, it didn't sound, from what the gentleman was saying, that there was any argument as to whether or not the trees could come down. His concern is what the replacement cost part of it is associated with the ordinance. And I believe if I'm correct, that's what he's asking to look at.
Well, I...
Madam Chair?
Does anybody know where this tree fund is? Who was in charge of it?
Yeah, we plant, we plant, we use money from the tree fund to replace trees. For instance, like, we lost a lot of trees with the ashbore, Emerald Ashbore thing in certain streets. So, that fund allows us to buy trees to replenish in neighborhoods.
Now, do we have any idea where we put these trees? Because I know people that paid to have those removed on the city property, and they don't have, they didn't replace them with trees. So, where did the trees get planted?
The city paid for all the removal. We didn't charge anybody.
No, there was a program.
No.
Where they paid a certain amount.
No.
No, there are, so, so there's certain people that wanted their trees down in between the sidewalk and the street, and if the city didn't take it down, and the city went out to determine that there may be an issue and the homeowner wished to take it down, we did allow them to do that in certain circumstances. The people that want trees in between the sidewalk and the street or somewhere on their property, if they asked the DPW, they do go out and look and to make sure. The only difference is, the problem we had when, when we first planted all these trees, when we became a city, is you see some of these mature trees now. I mean, it's not, it's not even like the sidewalks. There are some big trees. So, a lot of times, we'd rather, and even with the people that want to get them replaced, say donate them to a park or something.
Right. Well, I know that we had problems with the sycamore trees.
The sycamore, well, we, with the ashbore, and before that, it was the Dutch elm, but there's some huge silver maples now, especially down and on the south end between Telegraph and Monroe, that are just like, these trees are really big. So, a lot of times, like, last year, we planted, I think it was close to 50 trees in Parkland Park. But when people do ask, we do see if we can replace them.
I'm not sure that answered where that tree fund is.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't asked.
Does that show up in our budget? Tree fund? Because I never saw a tree fund in our budget. Should we have something in there as revenue?
Director Vance, would you like to answer that for Councilman Wenzel?
That isn't in the budget. That's a balance sheet item. So, when we put money into that fund, it's put on the balance sheet, so it's reserved for, specifically for trees. So, then the DPW can purchase the trees, as Christie said, for areas in the area. I'm not sure, but I think we're looking into it for the tree, for the, John here, isn't it for the, the City Hall? That big maple or pine tree that came down? I think we're looking to use some of the funds to replace that, but it puts the trees per the DPW's direction into the city properties.
Okay.
Can you also send that to us?
I'm sorry, what? Send you what? That's a hint, it's time.
Can you send us that balance sheet of where it's at?
Yeah, I can, I can give you the GL count activity and, yeah.
Okay, thank you. But again, he's in trouble here.
Yeah, council members, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Legacy or not, I respect the legacy. I'm arguing this is a hazard to me and my family. So, legacy or not, I've had these trees trimmed, by the way, just so I can use part of my driveway, but I can't keep up with it. These trees are hazard to me. I mean, I can't, I can't even describe to you the velocity of these projectiles that I mean, I can't even describe to you the velocity of these projectiles that come down, the damage they do to my landscaping, to my... And mind you, one other thing, anybody that loves black walnuts, they extrude a black sap or whatever you want to call it that poisons the vegetation that's around there, that poisons the soil, or at least certain shrubs can grow, or at least certain plants can grow. So, I can't even garden like I like to. This is my biggest hobby. I can't even do it. I've surrendered to the idea that I can't garden. That's fine, but I cannot keep up with these trees. I got to take them, and I shouldn't be penalized with another tax, with another tax on my property to contribute to a fund that nobody here seems to know where it is.
Can we have someone... Can we have someone talk to him tomorrow, maybe, and come up with some kind of solution?
Or Madam Chair, if I can finish.
Director Salmy?
Just, you know, to be the...
Because we're well over our time.
Well, I know, I know. Don't force me to put a certain dimensional, whatever that is. I don't know what that is.
I would gladly meet with you. You can call my office at any time. We could have resolved this before we ever got here. My number's 313-791-6000.
I will do that.
I'll gladly meet with you. I'll go through the ordinance, and you can...
That's fine, but that's not going to resolve the issue.
Well, he might work with you, sir.
That's what I'm trying to tell you.
Sir, give him a chance.
I will work with you. You got to listen to me, okay? Thank you.
All right. I'm not sure what we resolved, but...
No.
Let's see what he comes up with.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Hey. Your name in three minutes.
Make it really quick. My name is Stowe Pamela Traskis. I have a question. When this millage that we've been paying on for 20 years or whatever, and we've never noticed that we're paying on it, do we own this thing yet?
Yes.
Okay, so is this like a bad time share? We're going to always be paying this? When has this paid off?
No. What? There is multiple pieces to this particular judgment. So, there's a couple of years. I don't recall. I'd have to look it up, but it was for improvements. The biggest improvement that I'm aware of, there is a tunnel that goes from basically Taylor and Dearborn Heights and goes down to South Gate to the treatment plant. And that tunnel was oversized and done so that it relieves flooding in the Ecorse Creek area of Dearborn Heights. And so, that retention basin, and that was part of the solution. The reason it was fought or argued environmentally is that when all this water was pushed out, it went directly into the creek and bypassed the Down River Treatment Plant. Consequently, it wasn't treated. It ended up in Lake Erie, the Detroit River. That was found to be unacceptable. So, city leaders back in that point argued, "Well, if we have to do it, can we oversize the tunnel so that it would have capacity to relieve some of the flooding in the Ecorse Creek in the south end of Dearborn Heights and in the north end of Taylor and Allen Park?" That was agreed to, and that's what this assessment is for. Judge Fikens recognized that many of the communities had no taxing authority, and they would have to go for a vote to their people. He just came right out and said, "No. I'll tell you what I'll do is I'll order the tax to be put on the tax roll." And that's how it ended up there. So, it will eventually terminate, but we still have some years to pay.
How many is some?
Well, I'm not sure the exact extent...
Is it going to be my lifetime? Because I've lived here for 62 years.
Yeah, but you didn't pay it for the first 30, 40 years.
All righty.
So, because that judgment came out somewhere in the 19...
I think 1994 or thereabouts.
Yeah. So, a lot of the bonds tend to be 30, 35 years. So, my guess is that's probably, if you added 30 years to that thing, we're getting near the end of the taxation period.
Okay. And secondly, with regards to this roof, $8,000 roof, why don't we just put a permanent one on and never have to deal with this again? That's worth $8,000. A permanent roof?
What's permanent?
Metal roof.
Metal roof.
A metal roof.
Well, they're not permanent either, though.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cement. Fall on your head, really.
My name is Ed Farlick. I reside on 7067 Robindale. I take my hat off to the lady that lost her daughter, okay? And my concern is this. I've been at council meeting about two weeks ago, and I brought it up, and I'm going to bring it up to John, DPW director, John Solemani, that the light on Warren in Vermont is still down. Halloween's coming up. Some kid's going to run through there, you know, run there, maybe hit that thing there, fall on the street, and going to get killed, okay? And there's none of that besides that one. Then there's a stump on Robindale just before Hess on the right-hand side going south. That needs to be removed because some kids are going to run there, going to get hit for Halloween and get hurt, okay? And then I got another thing to bring up to the mayor. Our council, I mean, Garden City works with a smaller budget than what you do, okay? And their streets are clean. They got a downtown and everything else. What are you doing? I look at Warren Avenue. It looks like hell, okay? And everything else. When the DPW, Diane Webb comes here, somebody needs to address her Beach Daily all the way down. It looks like hell, okay, the road and everything else. Start doing your job, Mr. Mayor, because you've got money to work with.
Okay, no personal tax, please.
Start doing it.
Please, no tax.
I'll be quick. Dan Parrish, for the Parks and Rec, we had the new master plan that's been approved, not approved, but to have a company come in and do that. We've got 10 parks, I believe, in the city of Dearborn Heights. Am I correct? Okay, not sure. Okay, we have 10 parks in the city of Dearborn Heights. On our website, we don't even list our parks. I think that's a shame. I think we should have all of our parks listed by name, and we should probably have the addresses or the map on the city of Dearborn Heights where our parks are located so everybody knows where they are, perhaps have maps available in the city or something like that or downloadable on the city. Obesity in the state of Michigan is one of the highest in the nation. Coronary artery disease, one of the highest in the nation. One of the things I did when I retired as a police officer was I got personal training certification. You know, in our parks, we don't even have tracks. We don't have workout stations. We don't have things for kids to do. We don't have PE classes anymore for kids in schools. So, it'd be nice to have little workout stations in some of these parks where kids can do push-ups, there's a little diagram, pull-up bars, things like that. None of these things are located. Now, I know we have on our webpage, we've got fitness places to go to, Richard A. Young Canfield Center, Berwin Center, the three primary, those are all inside. What about outside? What about some stations, workout stations with a little running track or walking track? Not a lot of money. Something maybe to think about, maybe list some of our parks down there so we know what parks that we have in the city.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the audience? Your name and...
Zohair Abdalhaq, 354 Rosemary. My friend Tom, you're getting a great deal for $9,000 for this roof. Trust me. They put 700 square feet on the bathroom, and they spend $20,000. So, I recommend you guys go vote on it and let him do it, honestly. So, don't be surprised at what's going on in our city. I have a question, I think, to the water department. Some people want to turn on the water in their homes and businesses. It came to my attention that we have only one person who does that, and that person works one week in the north side and one week in the south side of the city. Is this true? Anybody can answer that question?
I don't really... I don't know what your question is other than you're saying that one person only works only strictly in the north end for one week and other the south for one week?
Yes.
That's not true because they also have emergency work that they have to do, emergency turn-ons and turn-offs. Excuse me. So, when somebody needs their water on or off, and they call us, we have it. If it's a scheduled thing, then it may take a little bit longer.
How long it takes?
I don't know, sir. It's 11 o'clock at night. You can call my office, and we can certainly discuss this.
I know you can stay until 1:00 in the morning.
I can stay here till 24 hours. It doesn't matter.
That's your job, John.
I am doing that.
I have the right to ask because, you know, a friend of mine asked me...
Has a customer call us?
He came and asked you guys, and you scheduled him for the 29th, then somebody scheduled him to the 28th. And his name is Ahmad Baydoun, if you want to know who he is.